Good afternoon. I want to call the meeting, the September the 14th, 2022 meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors and thank those that have joined us thus far and those that will join us as we go throughout the course of the afternoon. And with that, again, let's extend a welcome on behalf of this board and we'll turn to our clerk Florence Evans to call the roll, establish a quorum and to make some announcements. And we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance and then we'll get started.
Okay. Good afternoon. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Sunday, August the 19th, I believe, or September the 19th. I'm sorry.
It'll be September 19th.
Is it September? Can you give me the date?
September 19th is a Monday, so 18th is a...
The 18th. Thank you. My notes are off. At 6:00 PM on Channel 14. Talk about a bloopers. Let's start with the meeting announcement. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first come, first served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per agenda item or off agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or call for off agenda matters. When the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off agenda matter. Please refer to the agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue to make your public comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each agenda item queue will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific agenda item. You may also be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments by email to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Thank you, Flo. And would you be kind enough to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'm going to make a couple of announcements. I just wanted to further emphasize that I know we're going to have a number of presentations and along with that, obviously, there will be, I'm sure, board questions and I trust we'll have a number of folks that are going to want to weigh in, both in chambers as well as by phone. So I would ask folks to do their very best to adhere to the three-minute timing so that we can have an opportunity for all folks to be heard. We want to do that in the course of today's meeting. Depending upon timing and how things do go throughout the afternoon, I will just give a heads up that somewhere early evening, if we're well into the hearing and we have a large number of speakers, I'm going to call for a brief recess and probably a half hour and then we'll come back and take as long as we need to, to hear public testimony and continue the discussion, certainly here at the dais, but also hear from all the folks that want to weigh in on this very important matter. So with that, I don't have any other announcements. I know we have a couple of off agenda speakers, I believe, and then we have an order of folks to present and I'll certainly turn to Anne in a moment to let her start the introductions and then we'll go from there. So let's go ahead with our off agenda.
Okay. And I think you might have a speaker slip.
I do.
I don't have anyone on the phone at the moment.
Okay. So Mr. Adderall, Dan.
Good afternoon, Dan.
Good afternoon, Board Supervisors. I'm here today because it's been brought to my attention, I'm really upset because I almost lost my wife. She had her tumor gone, popped through her back and maybe rushed to the hospital. And while I was in the hospital, I found out a lot of legal stuff going on behind closed doors I didn't know about. I am really offended when I found out that this issue has been going on since May 2022. My wife showed me this. There were, American River Parkway Foundation is, went in the homeless off the American River Parkway and made a large sum because some donations towards getting them off the parkway, which we are not disputing the part of getting the homeless off the parkway. What we're disputing the part is how it's being done. There is no, I mean, nobody wants to be homeless on the parkway. Nobody does. They want, they want home. There's people out there, like I said before, they have three or four dogs, you know, they need help with that. They're not going to get rid of their dogs just so they can have a home. And right now, these rangers are going out there telling the homeless right now, I don't know if you heard this, you guys, but they're going out there telling the homeless, I witnessed this, that they have to be gone by the 28th off the parkway. They're telling them that, or be arrested and don't make me a bad guy, they said to the homeless. I witnessed this with my own eyes and ears. And to me, this is not the way you guys told me it was going to be. You guys told me that you guys want to do it in ways where helping the homeless into homes, where they're going to get help in that way, not sit there and throw them out to the streets when the city already did this already. City already passed a law too, what I've been told, that the same thing you guys did, making pretty much criminalizing the homeless here in Sacramento for being homeless. I thought this was not about criminalizing the homeless. I thought this was about helping the homeless. And right now, the homeless on the American River Parkway are really upset because they have been cleaning the American River Parkway for a long time, for almost 10 years, and now they're being told that basically they got nothing to look forward to but shelter and one pet. And that is not what they are promised by you guys here at the Board of Supervisors here in July. I am hoping that we could find another way around this where you guys could help them get into homes and help, because a lot of them work, you know, they just need a helping hand to get into a home. I said this before, they just need a helping hand into a home. And they want to continue cleaning the parkway afterwards, but they, I'm getting at those, that's just the American Home School. What about all the other homeless animals and homeless people out here that are going to be losing because only one dog, one shelter? That is just the wrong way to do things. And something needs to be changed, you guys. You guys have the power to do it and I hope you guys do. I hope you guys do the right thing because this really upsets me because the homeless animals have just as much rights to death as anyone else does, you know? And we're out here rescuing these homeless animals every day. I mean, me and my wife are the only thing that has that out there on the American River Parkway, period. You guys know this, you guys have helped and I appreciate that, Don. You know, but what I'm getting at, you guys, is there needs to be a change here in this order you guys are doing things because this one dog, two dog thing is not going to work with most of the homeless out here on the parkway. They, those animals are their emotional support animals. They're their life, they're their kids. And now you're trying to criminalize them for being homeless and they're already told that, and the rangers are telling the homeless, if you're not out here by the 28th, you're going to jail. I heard that with my own ears. That is not cool. I mean, that is not what you guys told me was going to happen. You guys say you guys are going to do it in waves and helping the homeless in waves where they're getting into homes. That is not what's being said on the parkway. The homeless are ready to riot and protest against us and I hope it don't come to that. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Dan. Okay. Dan's our off agenda speaker. Do we have any others on the phone, off agenda? Okay. Thank you, Dan. All right. Then with that, then we're going to go into our agenda and I know we have a number of presenters, so I'll turn to Ms. Edwards to, well, call that in first, if you could, Flo, and then we'll have Anne go ahead and...
Item two is the May's Consent Decree Workshop Expert Reports Criminal Justice Issues and Reforms.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Thank you, Chair Natoli. And Eric Jones is going to make this presentation.
Good afternoon, Chair, Board. I'm Eric Jones, Deputy County Executive for the Public Safety and Justice Agency. Now, although this is primarily May's Consent Decree related, this is really a bigger picture of overall issues and needed criminal justice reforms for our county. The amounts of committees, consultant and expert recommendations over the years are very voluminous and this is an attempt to consolidate and synthesize the very complex issue. Literally, there are thousands of pages of reports to attempt to synthesize here today. Included in most of these reports, including the jail reports, are really four themes or topical areas. These are to reduce the jail average daily population, reduce recidivism, increase diversion and to increase services at all points of what we call the sequential intercept model, which means before, during and after criminal justice system interaction points. Many reports align in most of these areas. You will see a lot has been done for alternatives to incarceration, weighing reforms and community safety. We will do our best with more diversion and intervention, but we also have to address the need for improved facilities. I wish we did not have to have jails, but the reality is that we do. And we can't just send these individuals to other jails either. This is about proper conditions for those incarcerated and getting the proper treatment for those needing it and community safety for everyone within our communities. Today is informational only. We, as county staff, will digest further these reports that we will discuss today and we will discuss this with our criminal justice partners. We will get more community voice in these particular topical areas over time and a recommendation will later be coming to the Board. And then work will begin on continued facility discussions as well as alternatives to incarceration discussions. Regarding why this workshop is happening now, why is the timing of today's workshop? We had to wait finalization of a peer review report, a peer review report that had to be finalized of the two subject matter expert reports that will be summarized today. I'm presenting the overview of all of the criminal justice system issues, but we do have representatives available today for later questions from, in our list, County Council, Sacramento Sheriff's Office, Adult Correctional Health Services, Facilities and General Services, Probation, Public Defender's Office, Superior Court and, of course, Nochtan Lewis, as well as Kevin O'Connell, the two primary reports that we'll be discussing.
Eric, could I ask you, were the monitors extended invitation to be present if they chose?
They were the plaintiff's counsel, monitors and all subject matter experts. That's correct, Chair.
Okay. But as far as what your list you read, they're not, they're not here to present or they're not present, as far as you know, the monitors?
I know specifically plaintiff's counsel chose to submit a letter, which was part of the agenda item.
Right.
Mr. Hayer, do you know if the...
Because they're court-appointed monitors that just aren't plaintiff's monitors. They're basically, the monitors are appointed by the court, correct?
That's correct.
That's correct, Mr. Chair. All of the experts were invited. I sent invitations to all of them. None of them indicated they were going to be willing to present or be on the agenda, if you like.
Okay.
There may be some listening in, but that's as far as I know.
Okay. I appreciate that. I just, because as you went down through the list and I, as long, the invitation was extended, that's important, so, okay. Thank you. Thanks, Eric.
Thank you, certainly. So we're going to begin with some context going back a few years. So to 2018, an Adult Correctional System Review Committee and consultants were concluded with a report which had recommendations of alternatives to incarceration. Also, that same year, the Criminal Justice Cabinet's Mental Health Work Group was established and part of that work group began the Integrated Data Driven Recovery Project, which also Kevin O'Connell was tasked with doing technical, leaned upon to do technical assistance and collaborative innovation activities to enhance diversion and reduce use of the jail for people with significant behavioral health needs. And Sacramento County in 2019 joined the Stepping Up Initiative to reduce people with serious mental health, mental illness in jails and the sequential intercept model was developed to better identify and address behavioral health needs for people going through the local criminal justice system. It's important to note that we're also to look at all of these efforts through a racial equity lens. We know there are racial disparities in the criminal justice system nationally, statewide. We're looking at it here locally. The questions are, number one, are there racial disparities in the criminal justice system? We have the data and we know that answer to be yes. The second question, which is more difficult, which we'll be examining over time, which is why. And then the third is how do we reduce these disparities within the criminal justice system with an ongoing basis? For the first time ever in this county, we'll be publicly posting a racial breakdown of arrests within our county, both on the Criminal Justice Cabinet website as well as the Public Safety and Justice Agency. Continuing on to the May's Consent Decree, a bit of background. The May's Consent Decree is based on a class action lawsuit of unconstitutional conditions of confinement in regards to medical care, mental health care, out of cell time and non-compliance with the Americans with Disability Act. Other counties have struggled in these same areas as well. The May's Consent Decree is a court order remedial plan to address these unconstitutional conditions of confinement in jails. This does address both the main jail as well as RCCC, Rio Casumnas Correctional Center, but mostly the main jail, meaning the great source of non-compliance lies within the main jail. The May's Consent Decree is the result of five years of negotiations. It is monitored by court-appointed experts as well as plaintiff's counsel. Every six months, the county issues self-monitoring reports and the subject matter experts issue a report within their areas of expertise. We must have a plan, really a direction, to address our areas of non-compliance by December, specifically with our areas of non-compliance concerning inadequate facilities. Now, these are the six May's Consent Decree remedial areas you see. Number one, segregation, restrictive housing. Secondly, I already mentioned ADA, suicide prevention, disciplinary measures for inmates with mental health or intellectual disabilities, mental health care and medical care. And you can see this goes back to 20 fiscal year 2021. These are the amount of staff that have been added over these fiscal year periods specifically to better comply with May's Consent Decree. Now, these are the authorized positions, not necessarily filled because there have been staffing challenges, but this is for both the, or for the sheriff's office, correctional health and contracted mental health staff. So you can see here in 2021, there were 54 additions of positions, then 53 and then fiscal year 22, 23, 86 positions.
Eric, does the 86 include the four additional that were approved in the budget request last week?
That, that does not.
So is it actually 90?
That would be.
Okay.
That's correct.
Great. Thank you.
Also, the county has been within partial compliance in all areas. The least progress really regards the ADA compliance due to facility space. We'll talk a little bit about that later as well to the main jail. Now we go on to what's known as the CARRY Group Report, 2020. And the CARRY Group Report recommended several approaches to safely reduce the jail population. Here, it's going to be a systematic data-driven approach to criminal justice planning, prioritizing research-informed pre-trial strategies, expanding programs that tie participation to risks and needs such as the sheriff's jail alternatives, collaborative court, the adult day reporting center and multitude of jail reentry programs, as well as to apply a countywide framework to increase community-based support services and resources. The county is making progress. We are improving, for example, the data systems here. We still have a long way to go to have a proper countywide data sharing, as well as, as you heard a lot about at the last budget cycle, the public defender and probation pre-trial programs and again, as well as the collaborative court and jail reentry programs. So additionally, we've recently established a, we're looking at metrics continually. We need to have better metrics. One, specific to the Community Corrections Partnership, is the definition of recidivism, which is the Board of State and Community Corrections definition of recidivism. That was recently agreed to by all partners at the recent CCP meeting. Regarding data, there is a big need for better countywide data sharing and also for public-facing statistics and data for better transparency. And recidivism is not the metric of success. In fact, there are a lot of other metrics for a lot of these programs mentioned that are still being established and we're using the help of the Community Corrections Advisory Board and other advisory boards to help us discover and track other metrics of success. So the county has implemented most, if not all, recommendations of the CARRY Group Report to some degree. I mentioned the CCP Advisory Board input and we have numerous community and stakeholder input groups that will be further leveraged, including the newly developed Community Review Commission, as well as the newly developing Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee. I won't pretend to speak for the community and this is why I need committees like the Advisory Committee for Public Safety and Justice to help inform all of my criminal justice partners on, on good policies, practices and protocols. The Nochtan Lewis Main Jail Improvement Report, the analysis, and you all have copies of the report, and as I said, the consultants are here to answer any questions if needed. The analysis has indicated to meet needs, the jail, of the May's Consent Decree, the jail's capacity must be reduced to 1,357 beds, which would be a loss of a little over 1,000 beds, or to put it another way, nearly 44%. Also concluded that substantial compliance with all consent decree requirements is not possible within the current main jail facility structure, as was confirmed through the peer report. The Nochtan Lewis consultants were commissioned by the county and are correctional architectural experts. They were actually involved in the original main jail. In this case, they were tasked at looking at the May's Consent Decree, looking at the building of the main jail, looking at how many can be in the building to reach compliance. The reports do also mention some significant challenges to compliance. That has been COVID, of course, because the buildings are not designed for communicable diseases. Staffing, I mentioned positions were created, but it's been difficult filling those positions. The fact that it's an old facility, which means it's non-ADA, non HIPAA in many areas and it is a concrete structure that cannot be easily modified. Experts also opined that some areas of the main jail cannot be in compliance regardless of population reductions. An example would be the booking loop based on the current structure of how it exists now with serious ADA and HIPAA issues and the delivery of mental health and medical services in some areas.
Eric, could you just pause for a second? I have a question to Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Eric, relative to the last bullet here, which, you know, that's, that's a pretty profound statement, but what it doesn't tell me is whether or not substantial compliance with all consent decree requirements is possible or maximized if you take both the main jail and RCCC together. So by this, from this statement, are we to conclude that based on the peer review, even consideration of some ability or flexibility that's permitted, if you put RCCC in the mix, we still cannot meet the consent decree requirements?
That is true specifically to, for example, the booking loop, which is the booking entry, which is here at the main jail downtown. There have been a lot of improvements, shuffling with RCCC. Certainly any, we're currently looking at all facilities as far as a study and assessment to see how, for example, can some things be done at RCCC that can alleviate some of the issues at main jail. But even with a serious population reduction in the main jail and even with other improvements at RCCC, it would, it would not fix the, what is known as the current booking loop.
So instead of reference to the main jail here, that last sentence, it's, it could read is not possible within the, within Sacramento County's current jail system, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything to add on that? Okay.
If I could, I'd just like to piggyback on that, with that point. So just reflecting very briefly on the response, what about though, as, and we're going to get a full measure of what was in those reports and obviously they're publicly available, but I know that as recently as sometime earlier this calendar year, we had discussion about the, some of the things that were identified, physical improvements that would likely have to occur irrespective of what might be as relative to any additional medical capacity or, you know, shifting certain in custody treatments and/or accessibility to certain services and so forth, that, where are we with that? Because again, as you see, looking at facilities and I guess my question boils down to, at the end of the day today, I mean, it's in the report that you, you said when your opening comments, Eric, that, you know, you're going to be back to this board with, with a plan for consideration within this calendar year, so before the end of, before the end of this year. But what has been done, and maybe somebody could just give a very brief and not to interrupt your flow of things here, you know, what have we done physically, concrete walls or not, within the confined spaces and, you know, what's contemplated? Because, you know, as I recall, we had some eight to 10 million dollars worth of improvements that, you know, we've yet to start on. We've identified them and we know how they might fit into, you know, programmatic as well as, you know, address issues that are outlined in the consent decree relative to privacy, to, to, you know, certain, the booking loop being a part of that, but other internal aspects of the, of the jail. And, you know, just for an example, I heard anecdotally that, you know, there was a classroom that was being used as office space. Well, it's now been freed up so you can have some privacy space, but it would have seemed to me that those types of things would have been done right away and if there was a physical improvement that was required by that, that we would have embarked upon that, you know, it may not have been a multimillion dollar task, but, and so I guess I'm curious and again, again, I don't want to, you're going to provide the framework here, but I point that out because I think those are key indicators of one, certainly what we've committed to do thus far and I think they informed the discussion today, but they will certainly inform the decision that we're going to be asked as a board to make, you know, in just, you know, a few short months. And so, again, maybe somebody could respond, but I wanted to put that out there because as I read through this and then got to reflect on discussion we had about making some improvements and we, we stepped back momentarily, but we're still going to have to do some of those things and we could do some of those things right now, I trust. And we didn't want to, it was explained to me, we didn't want to do something that we would then have to go back and, you know, you know, modify once again and do it twice, but there are physical improvements, I trust, in the jail, crowded or not, that would help. And I, you know, heard of one, but probably others, and I know you spoke to it at the budget last week, that the unit that was, you know, designated at RCCC that would take care of a certain segment of folks that have, you know, behavioral health and/or other medical needs and to have that pod, I guess, for lack of a better description, at RCCC. And so those are types of things. Again, I don't know how much in depth you're prepared or you or somebody is to talk about some of those things today, but I think it would be helpful, again, as we're going to, you know, listen, hear the reports, ask questions and then deliberate this, obviously, today and going forward over the next couple of months, so.
Yes, Chair, I can discuss two specific issues that come to mind and then if we would like, I can have a representative from the sheriff's office speak about quite a few things that have been done within the confinements of the structure there, going back, you know, years.
Sure.
But two other things that have been done to attempt to alleviate this issue at the main jail. Number one is there, there was an early assessment done on what's known as, or has been known as the Three West Project, but it's essentially a reshuffling of some space within the jail. And I believe it's 20 to 30 beds maybe provided as an addition in that project and it's about, or was then about an $8 million project, but that project will be looked at with a lot of other facility examination as well, holistically. One other thing that was done recently to deal with the average daily population within the jail is the federal contract. So Sacramento County and the sheriff's office have a contract with the US Marshals Office for those that are on federal charges. And that contract was negotiated with myself and county council to reduce that number to really only those in our county. to really only those in our county, because it had historically been covering much of California, almost the Oregon border, down to almost Bakersfield. So that population has been reduced within recent months by about 100. So that's additional successes we've found as a county. And then so with that, if we--
So just to make it simple, so the West End Project, that's been identified, but that was the one that was put on hold. Again, that may be the one, in my mind, the $8 million stuck with me. So we haven't done anything beyond identifying that that could be helpful, but it would help us make more progress towards the current standing of the consent decrees, but we haven't embarked upon that, and I trust that would take us a couple of years, just knowing how jail construction or even reshuffle. I could be wrong, so maybe Rick or somebody could describe what that is, or what it would take to do to actually implement that.
So that is to move the current psych unit that's on our second floor up to the third floor, and as Eric indicated, it would expand that, almost double it, I believe. That has not been started. That is something that I believe will be part of a plan that we come to you later on this year about. But to your question about facility improvements, that has been an ongoing process for the sheriff's department and for general services since the negotiations on May's started. And one of the things that pops out in my mind about that is when we go back and we look at why the advocates came here in the first place, one of the things that they were most concerned with, or at least very concerned with, was the practice of having individuals that were on suicide watch be placed in what are known as the classrooms on the floors of the main jail. And the reason they were put there was because there was simply not enough adequate space for those individuals in other places in the jail. The sheriff's department and correctional health and JPS worked very hard to address that issue, and I believe have, for a large part, ameliorated that. And the way they did that was they repurposed spaces within the jail. They created things like the intensive outpatient program to add capacity for individuals suffering from a mental health crisis. They also have developed something called the SITHU, which, for the life of me, I can never keep what that acronym means in my mind, but it is also to address individuals that are around that, that have suicide concerns. But the problem with doing all of that is they were not able to create new space in the jail. It was taking existing space and reimagining it, repurposing it for those. And for instance, the SITHU until COVID existed in a day room. It was taking beds, putting them there, where people could have direct observation. By that, I mean, the sheriff's department and psych services could have direct observation of individuals in a day room space. So, and the reason that we had to do that was because there was no ability to take a unit, totally change it around, repurpose it, because of, again, the concrete walls, the inherent difficulties with construction in the jail facility. And there's probably other things that I'm not thinking of that the sheriff's department can speak of, but every time we do something, it will come back to that core issue of it is either impossible or impractical to do real construction inside the main jail.
So, Rick, if I could take from that, then this West End Project, you're saying it's been identified, it was potentially ready to be funded, I guess it would require some direction by this board, but it's been, you know, placed on hold to be part of the broader evaluation or reevaluation. But is it that anticipated that that would not go forward if the subject of additional space, you know, separate apart from what's in the current confines of the jail were contemplated? So, or because part of that, even if construction were authorized for something more today, you're talking years before that would occur. In the meantime, you've got folks that are in those conditions, as well as people that are, you know, in custody staff and jail psych and all the other folks that are there to attend to the needs, and some of them very serious. So I guess I'm puzzled that if we were to do that, and recognizing some of the data that we're going to hear about here in a moment, about the number of folks who have, you know, challenges as they come into the jail, then it would seem to me that even 30 beds on top of whatever else might be contemplated would be beneficial to both the people in there, but also people that have to, you know, that are there as a part of the staffing on a daily basis. My question, so is it anticipated that, depending upon where you go with this plan, that you would not do the West End Project?
So I think that when we bring you a recommendation towards the end of this year, that can certainly be part of the options that you have. So we'll bring a full picture to you, and with some recommendations and options.
Okay, so that will be included as a part of the consideration?
Yes.
And, Chair, if I may, the consideration of why it's important, we believe, to look at that project while also looking at a variety of other options, is, let's say it's that $8 million to do that reconfiguration, but then we find there's some other things we could do, and then will that have to be shifted back? So the costs to have to shift it one way, and then another way, we want to look at it comprehensively.
Yeah, that would not be smart use of money. I guess I just, the timing factor is always a piece of it, so, okay. I appreciate that. I'm sorry to interrupt your presentation, but I have important questions here. Thanks.
Here's a summary now of the Kevin O'Connell Report, 2022. And so there are three key recommendation areas, which we'll talk a little bit about more. To reduce jail bookings, again, through expanded deflection, some of these other augmented responses, expanded use of site and release in the field. The second area is reducing length of stay in custody through a variety of these programs listed here. And finally, reducing returns to custody through expansion of these responsive treatments, targeted programming, and coordination of assessment screenings. We, these areas, if all systems partners in both health services, as well as criminal justice system, the courts, we'll talk a little bit more in a moment about all of the variety of partners that would have to align properly to make this happen. The report basically says that about 600 average daily population could be reduced, which is still, as you can see, quite short of the 1,000 approximate reduction needed. Now, the county has already been in partial compliance in a number of these areas. There have been efforts to reduce the lengths of stay through a variety of procedural changes and program expansions. But again, as I mentioned, to get to that number would require every single county law enforcement department and other criminal justice department to do a lot more, for example, citations and releases in the field, which would be fewer bookings. As you know, the jail takes the bookings from all of the police departments and other law enforcement agencies within the county, and don't necessarily have control of those coming in to the booking loop.
That's about two dozen different, separate agencies?
Yes. Yes, so it's your large police departments here in the county. It's also California Highway Patrol has a large amount of bookings, et cetera. So also a recap, really, of the three studies we've been discussing. First, the Nochtan Lewis, which, again, recap is to determine how many people can be housed in the main jail and still comply with the consent decree. I'd like to point out that based on their involvement in this project so far, they would not be able to be involved further in any further design or build projects related to this. Second report, the Kevin O'Connell Report, which essentially the question was, how many people can be reasonably diverted or released to reduce the average daily population? Kevin O'Connell was already doing earlier work here in the county for three years ago on the Data Driven Recovery Project, and he is a data analyst and expert in the criminal justice system data, focusing on changes outside the jail. And his work was really born out of the Mental Health For Us Work Group recommendations. Then there was the third report, I mentioned, the peer review report. This was the Wendy Still report. Ms. Still reviewed these two expert reports to evaluate the professional work, the methodology, and she has experience with Alameda and San Francisco probation departments, correctional design, alternatives to incarceration, and she was a fresh set of eyes on the May's consent decree issues. And again, really, the challenges for reducing the population are that the sheriff's office and adult correctional health cannot do it alone. We need cooperation, support from the court, district attorney, public defender's office, all of the law enforcement agencies, and community partners.
Eric, could I just ask a question, though? You didn't say it, maybe you meant to include it, but probation has a role in that, too, because probation violations are a significant portion of the readmissions, I would trust.
Yes, probation department is absolutely a key partner in all of these efforts, both to reduce the jail population, but also to reduce recidivism.
Recidivism.
Yeah.
And you mentioned that there was agreement regarding the definition of recidivism? Could you just recite, what is that? Maybe you did already, I didn't. What's the agreed upon?
Yes, so this is, yes, Chair, it's the Bureau of, let me find the definition.
What was the federal definition?
It's a state definition, the Board of State and Community Corrections. Now, BSCC funds all things CCP AB 109 related. So all of the funding that we get as a county and other counties actually have to report out on their definition anyway to show the success or progress in all of the programs that we receive that funding from. So I'll state what that definition is. It is a conviction of a felony or misdemeanor within three years of release from custody. Various definitions are maybe an arrest or different time periods. This one is a conviction within three years of a release.
And so we'll use that throughout all the various agencies that are part of, obviously, the cabinet and the commission?
Actually, that definition is specific at this time for the Community Corrections Partnership, which receives that funding through the BSCC, which have all of, many of our partners. You know, we have probation, public defender, we have the courts. But it is specific to programs that come out of the Community Corrections Partnership AB 109 funding.
So it's not universally applied or accepted, then, so?
It is not. We believe it's not the metric of success for a variety of different programs. For example, even if you look at the probations pretrial and public defenders pretrial programs, they're addressing individuals in different points of the system, and therefore, you know, different metrics may apply, as well as collaborative courts, as well as other programs.
Okay. No, I appreciate you going back. Again, I heard what you said earlier, but I guess maybe if you explain what the definition was, but it is that three years. It says a conviction and/or a--
A conviction of a felony or misdemeanor.
Okay, conviction of either one of the offenses. Okay, all right, thanks.
So in Kevin O'Connell's report, there were six themes that he found that impact the jail population and opportunities. So I'll briefly go over them here. The first one is that 95% of those in the main jail average daily population have underlying felony charges. So that's either a very recent felony arrest or charge, or it could be based on an existing warrant for a felony charge. But 95% are, have those underlying felony charges. Second one is pre-dention, pretrial detention drives the jail population. Third is that most jail admissions result in short stays. Four, an acknowledgement that stark racial disparities persist. Fifth, mental health conditions are a large factor in the jail. And sixth, readmission is also a key driver of the jail population.
On box number one, is there a further breakdown of that 95%? Because I think you just outlined it, it could either be a recent felony conviction or it could be a probation violation. Is there a subset number that is known to folks that gets to that?
Mr. O'Connell? Yes, up here, please. Thank you. So I'm going to have Kevin O'Connell speak to that point, Chair.
Okay, thanks. Sorry to get you down here before your time, Kevin, but he got to that box, I was curious.
Sure. Well, I think this is a way to summarize just the jail ADP, but oftentimes, there's two different parts of that. I think the felony part is going to be people on new crimes versus people coming in for things like warrants, court commitments, technical probation or parole violations. So I think with that, I'm kind of looking at is there's a felony population that's most of the jail, but misdemeanors do enter, they just don't stay very long. And so the important part, I think, to take away from here is there's not a lot of low-hanging fruit, just to say, people are here for minor violations, let them out. They're largely out. That 5% is mostly going to be domestic violence, stays longer, obviously, than other people with maybe more complex cases that might involve something else. So the idea here is just to show that felony populations are really that driver of the population, so the easy answers are somewhat gone, and that's probably the intent there.
Right, but my curiosity went to your first point, was of that 95%, and you went through them, and so did Mr. Jones, kind of there's are different subsets of how folks get there. They have felony as the backdrop, but, you know, it could be, you know, a reoffense, a recent conviction, could be, you know, violation of a condition of probation, you know, technical warrant, whatever you said. So is there a breakdown, either in your study or not, and again, maybe it's in the report, and it was pretty voluminous, so when you give a presentation, you could direct to that page, so take a look at that. Because I think it's an important piece of information, as I think it's a backdrop for, again, you know, what we know is, you know, what you're saying is 95%, but then there are different levels of that, all of them having, obviously, the felony as a, you know, again, as a piece of it, but may not be that people just did something recently, they didn't adhere to their conditions for one reason, and there are a lot of circumstances, I'm sure you would admit to that, that by which people violate. Sometimes, you know, life takes over and no excuse, but they end up back in jail. And so that's the type of thing, I guess it gets evaluated in some of the, you know, working to try to deflect or defer, and maybe you'll cover that later on in your information, so.
Yeah, I mean, I think the quick takeaway, because I know you're trying to move on, is 60% were kind of for new law violations, 40% were not. I think that maybe that would be the takeaway from that point. I have to get the exact comment. 60% are new crimes, 40% are, again, warrants, is some percent, large, you know, failures to appear type warrants are a large part. People being committed to jail from court, out of court, so they, you know, come into court and their sentences go to jail for that, some amount of time. Then lastly, there could be technical supervision violations of parole or probation. But I have to say, those are fairly small part of that. Warrants really are the big driver of that, and a lot of those folks don't have any program they're on, actually. So it's not like there's a pretrial monitoring piece to that. They're really, not necessarily on any program at all, there's not showing a backup for court. So that's kind of a part, I think, in some of my recommendations, I really do focus on that warrant reduction part of it, because it is a large driver of your population, that one part. But happy to break it down further, but I don't want to distract from the flow you're in.
Okay, well, maybe when you back up for your part, that's a good point, though, the warrant violations, and then, you know, is there a way to bore down to that through service delivery or through working with the courts, through other aspects of being supportive? And I know we've got some good examples, both in the public defender, as well as in probation department, and maybe through the courts themselves. But that would seem to be, into what you just said, a key piece, you know. I may not get to the physical number that we're talking about here, but I would think that that would be, you know, a point where we might be able to have some net effect in a good way for both the people, obviously, that are in the criminal justice system, but also then for what we're trying to deal with here in the broader aspect of jail conditions and supportive services in the community, so.
So that is one of my recommendations.
Good, okay, thanks, Kevin.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
So I had a question, I'm not sure if you want to go too far.
I was going to ask the same.
In the second box, pretrial detention drives the jail population, that second bullet is very disconcerting there. What is the, what's the time period that someone looked at that drew them to that conclusion that there's a growing number of folks that are incompetent to stand trial? Is that over the last 10 years, the last five years?
Oh, and Supervisor and Chair, so the present, there was no actual spot for Mr. O'Connell to give a presentation, so I believe this is the time for him to address exactly this. This was the last slide of a summary of Mr. O'Connell's report. So I think not only this question, but perhaps an overall summary that you would like to speak to, to the board, so, thank you.
Okay, well, thanks, Eric.
Let me speak to that bullet. Actually, that was, so the period I looked at was 2015-16 calendar year, on up to about fall of 2021. And so if you think of all the different things that are happening throughout that time period, there are a lot, and there was a pandemic in there that, as you probably heard, had a huge impact on the jail population for a lot of different reasons, the whole justice system. So to speak to that point, it was actually more because people were not being able to be sent to the state hospital, which then caused it to be a growing percent of your pretrial population, because people that are incompetent to stand trial are by definition pretrial, but that is part of that concern. And so how do you create the alternatives in place? But that is that number, and part of that is because the system stopped taking people, but also because there is, you know, over time, there's been an increase in people that are found incompetent, but that grew faster than the group that was pretrial. That's the intent there.
Great, thank you.
Just to follow on, but they're still held in custody, even though they're going, and so, and is this part of the subcategory, the Murphys? going, and so, and is this part of the subcategory, the Murphys portion of it? And, because I know that's been something, we've received some correspondence on. And I thought we had a program to work to help folks so they could, you know, attain the competency, assuming that they got the proper treatment and, and, you know, some of the needs were addressed. So where are we with that? Because there's been some recent changes in the way we handle some of that, the Murphys?
So there's the larger group that have been found incompetent to stand trial, and then a subcategory of that is the Murphys. And Murphys, our county is not the highest in Murphys conservatorships, but it's an outlier. And there is a dedicated work group trying to figure out exactly how to address that. It's, it's not a large number overall, I think at 13 or 14 Murphys conservators right now. That number has been coming down as we've, that work group has been working on this issue, but it's one or two individuals at a time. To address the larger systemic issues on that, I don't have an answer for that right now, but that is something that the work group, which I should say is, most of the players in the criminal justice system are part of that group, is definitely working on and meeting, I believe, monthly.
But these people are all being held in jail?
Yes.
And?
Well, I shouldn't say that.
Okay.
Some are, some are not. Some are held in mental health treatment facilities, including our own Sacramento County Mental Health Treatment Facility, but I believe the majority of them are held in custody.
Again, we have very limited capacity at our mental health treatment center. We have 50 beds, right?
That's correct.
And have we given a look at how we might expand capacity within the institutional framework to accommodate more folks that they wouldn't be confined in the jail, but could be in a program where the fit was appropriate?
You just approved in the budget an expansion of a mental health treatment facility specifically for the Murphys conservatorship folks, so that's not everybody, but that is underway.
And that will be at the mental health treatment center?
No, no, that's.
Not the subacute facility, residential facility we're talking about? I'm going to look to Siobhan.
Yeah, thank you for the question. So I can answer that in a couple of different parts. So one is, as you, as you recall, the RAND study did identify that we need more subacute beds, and that is the subacute facility, the 64-bed facility we're working on. The other piece to that is you approved a budget for us to be able to move 10 of these folks who are on Murphys conservatorships to another facility, which is a subacute unit that exists, that's not run by the county, but that we're going to contract with to move 10 out of the jail and into this subacute facility, so yes.
And that's not the RTRPC pod that we were talking about in budget, that's different?
No, that's, that's a different budget ask, and there's currently 11 folks on Murphys conservatorships in the jails. We'll be able to move 10 of those out.
It might be helpful, again, ask questions, but I think trying to get these pieces, and so, obviously, we're getting the answers to this, so it might be to show what we've done both budgetarily recently, what we contemplate, and how that may provide some relief, both to jail population, but also to better treatment regimens for folks who either are still awaiting trial, waiting competency hearings, getting services within, you know, within the framework, obviously, of the justice system. But so that would be helpful, because again, I, you know, I didn't put those pieces together, as you just said, where we get the authorization recently for additional 10 beds, again. And if you have 11 on Murphys, you'll be able to accommodate all but one, at least of the current number?
Absolutely, yeah. The, the, so we asked for 10 because one person is really not eligible or suitable for the facility we'll, we'll be moving folks to.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy, you got a question? Thanks, Siobhan.
Thank you. Yes, sir. So on, thank you for being here. On box number three, we say 20% of releases stay less than one day, and 55% releases less than three days. That would lead me to believe, and I'm not an expert, that's why I'm asking you the question, that these are not necessarily dangerous threats to society if we're releasing them as quickly as we are. Is that kind of a, I know it's a broad statement, but is it fairly accurate?
I think that's the intent there, is you have a lot of people coming through in terms of just volume of bookings, and I'm not going to kind of get at the actual, the individual data points, but the idea is you have a lot of people staying up until, let's say, up until arraignment, which is that, kind of that three days or less. So that's my rough estimate to say, somebody's being held up until that point of arraignment, and then being released there by the court. So there is a group, two or three days, there where somebody could be staying, that, you know, if they are safe to release, or maybe have some of their kind of need that could be addressed through that release, that would be the time to do it, because really, they're just staying up until that court date and being released then. The 20% in less than one day is really what's called zero-day stays or quicks, and a lot of those folks are come for a broad range of reasons, broad range of needs, broad range of kind of, I would say, crime types, but largely, that was the intent there. There's a large group there that could be just avoided as a booking. It's not going to save you a lot of day, bed days, let's say, but a lot of just the movement through the jail that's causing, let's call it, like, returns to custody, but maybe not for a lot of time. Because a lot of the people that are what's called, like, high utilizers of jail are coming in a lot. People that stay really are not the question, it's really the ones who keep coming through over and over again without some kind of break in that behavior, or a break in how the system works and processes with them.
So wouldn't these be candidates for, if we had, let's say, a robust diversion program so that to keep them from ever even being booked into the jail, they still can go through the process of some kind, but not through the jail? Wouldn't those be good candidates typically for that?
Yeah, and I think to, and I use the word deflection for folks that almost be, if they have to be booked into the jail, and I, I'm not an expert in the exact jail protocols or how a law enforcement might process them, but if someone's going to say zero days, is there some other way to cite them, get them fingerprinted in a different facility that would then void that whole, you know, the jail interaction? That's, that would be kind of, that was one, I think, recommendation number one, is like, how do you build out for basically 10,000 bookings or releases, you know, different ways to do that? Because, you know, across all your districts, folks are coming from all over the county to one place, and then they got to get back there. So you're already making somebody unstable just for that reason, but are there ways to think regionally about this? And also, each case is different, but I think if they're released in zero days, clearly there was, you know, an intent to release them, and they could be done safely.
That's what I was getting at, thank you. And number five, with 15% acute levels of care, 35% outpatient levels of care. You may not know this, and Eric, I don't know if anybody, if we have this, if, I don't know if we have this data, but when, when we say that they're coming in and 15% are acute levels of care, 35% outpatient levels of care, do we know if the, the offense that they have committed to get them into the jail are manifestations of their mental health crisis or issues, or, you know, or did they commit a crime and happen to have mental health issues?
I can speak to the intent, as from a, you know, because I guess I could speak to kind of the data I looked at versus what you'd have to know from a clinical or legal point of view, but the idea there is there are some people are going to need a high level of care in the jail. Other folks may have, might be diagnosed with a serious mental illness, but really be largely stable. And I'll stop there with my clinical expertise, I want to leave that to others. But if you actually look at, in the report, there is a section on, for people in this level of care or with SMI, why are they entering the jail?
Right.
What is it about their, you know, the timing of it, the bookings, the length they stay, in this kind of detail, but not getting into, were they stable at the time of entry, but do they have an SMI that was ever diagnosed and we know about? It's a way to say, if you have an SMI in the community, you need support. So how do you make that work, and how do you do that, knowing that in the jail, that day, that week, you may be stable and on, you know, and medicated, or, you know, feeling okay, those kind of things? So that was the intent there. The clinical part of that is much more complex, and the legal part also as well. So I want to make sure I stop there with my, my level of expertise.
Okay, appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Kevin, can I just, back to what Supervisor Kennedy was asking about on that, number three, is the 20% a subset of the 55%? Or are those two separate?
Subset. So the 55% are three days or less.
It encompasses the 20%? Okay.
There is this, in the, I guess I'm not going to get the page numbers right, but in about halfway through, there is a slide on reentry, and it really kind of buckets out zero days, one to three, four to 10. And the reason those buckets were used are more to kind of reflect the court process, that some point, if you're going to be, you know, waiting to a next hearing, four to 10 days, 10 to 30, to give folks an idea of what are the different things happening in, you know, other parts of the system as the person stays in jail or is incarcerated.
Thank you for that. And then box number six, with the readmission is the key driver of the jail population, and, you know, those are pretty stark numbers. And in your analysis, again, combined, obviously, with some of the other information we have, where there are things that were looked at or pointed out, maybe, maybe they are, and again, I just haven't gotten that far in all this, but that really speak to the core of why, you know, and whether it's criminality, it's poverty, it's substance abuse, behavioral health, whatever it might be, were you able to detail that out? Because again, those, those numbers, you know, I think go to the core, and then you can take that back to number four, and look at disparities as well, and, and some of those factors. So was any of that analysis done as part of your report? And if so, pointed out, so again, bring focus to it, and/or, because it seems to me, we're going to be back here in a few months, these are key issues, as we look at resource allocation, and, you know, things that we're already doing, where we're having some success, but also things that, you know, would give us the full range of alternatives for this board to weigh in on as we make decisions going forward, we're going to commit significant resources. So I'm curious about those two, four and six, and kind of how they might tie together in your analysis of.
I think in this, I tried to focus on what we could see in the jail, kind of like jail information you had access to, only because you start getting into what their needs are in the community, and really, all you could know that is from an assessment that is done by, you know, a validated assessment tool to say, Kevin needs things around, you know, financial needs, you know, what's called antisocial behavior, substance use, other things that could drive future justice involvement. But I think maybe a part of this from the, the intent of these kind of tools is, though, like, things like homelessness and things like mental health are not considered predictive of recidivism or coming back again, but they are things that need to be addressed through what's called responsiveness. So to make sure that you can address their mental health needs or their housing needs, you can't really get to these more complex things like education. And that's kind of, so that'd be maybe the first kind of part about that, is that the returns to custody are one piece of that, and some of that are why they're coming back. And so we did see people coming back quite often for things that were low-level offenses, let's say, of drunken public or disorderly conduct. To me, that would be your, almost like your typical person, is somebody coming back a lot, is not there for really things that are maybe public safety issues, they're really a behavioral health need that keeps coming back over and over again for one day at a time. I'm sure you kind of can imagine the story there, which is very different from somebody we really want to kind of engage with and really change their behavior because they're maybe causing a public safety issue. So I think the intent with this, to be able to differentiate people who are kind of a public safety need, and really want to address their thinking and how they do it, and put a lot of resources into that, first, more of a human service interaction, when do you do that? To the individual needs, I looked at some, what's called the LSCMI, which is a, basically looks at what's called criminogenic risk for people that have been assessed. And so probation does this assessment, as well as the jail for its reentry program. What it helps to do is give a validated approach to kind of what people need to reduce future justice involvement, not just saying because they have a substance use need, that must be what we do right now. It gives a better way to kind of prioritize where, where the different needs might be, and how to at least kind of address those for the purpose of reducing recidivism. There may be a whole other host of human service needs that are needed, but one of the ways to look at that is what's going to reduce future justice involvement, not just have their needs in general, but that is one way, that's one piece I did look at. And that kind of showed that a lot of it was peers and associates, kind of their, how they use their free time, possibly unemployment, all being issues, as well as education. So I think that would be what that data showed. To look at community health and kind of community drivers of what that is, that's almost like a whole other kind of social determinants of health approach, which I think is, you know, probably other groups might do it better than me, but I didn't go into the kind of the community level piece of it, only because that would have made it a much longer report, but.
But have you done that in any of your work in the past?
Not at that level in this kind, but I have done it before with also looking at what the needs are of people, and then what kind of programs they might appropriately be matched to.
Again, maybe I would just turn to our top county administrative staff, though, because again, that's part of what this board faces on a regular basis, is, you know, resources and how we, you know, invest both in the community to address, you know, a variety of needs, but certainly, human needs. And then we were, you know, talking today, obviously, about law and justice, and, and the confinement aspect of that. So I guess it may be Ann or Eric or someone, would it be wise to have some additional information around that? Do we think we know enough about that as it relates to, again, whether you deflect, divert, invest, reinvest, connect folks with services, and again, you know, with all the other things of staffing, and who pays for it, and so forth? But do we think we have enough information? Again, because again, I find this, in this linkage here, because it speaks to the, some of the central questions here, regard, you know, population, reduction, conditions in the jail. So I guess, and I, you know, again, I don't mean to surprise you with the question, but I'm just curious, because if there's some capacity to do that, I'm not looking just to have more consultant information, but if it would help inform this board, when we're going to be confronted with a big decision, a whole package of things, in a few months, whether that would be helpful to know, again, before we embark upon that decision?
So I don't, we probably don't have all the information. We do know that more mental health services and substance abuse services are absolutely needed, and we know, based on the RAND study that Ms. Katari spoke about, that shortage of subacute beds is there. We know that residential care for substance abuse has been lacking, and all of those things are in the queue right now for expansion. So we do know what some of the needs are, particularly around mental health and substance abuse, and there are lots of things underway to expand those services that should help.
And I guess, just, and I appreciate the response, because again, it kind of takes me back to, at least in my own thinking here, that we don't know exactly what the outcomes are going to be, it would be, you know, more people will be served, and we hope we're going to have, but we don't know how it ties back to some of what we're talking about here today. Is there any way to have some predictive outcomes, maybe with some, you know, fair assumptions, about how that would impact going forward over time with those investments in our community, and in, you know, in serving people in a variety of situations, that could help impact what's been detailed here? Again, I mean, this analysis is, you know, is not useful, but it's very helpful, that consideration. So I guess, because that, again, that's something this board, obviously, we, you know, we just made, you know, a seven-plus-billion-dollar decision last week in how to invest, you know, county dollars, and I guess I'm curious, because it would inform us a little better, because we know, you know, we know those needs.
I think the data that Mr. O'Connell has reported is indicative of it being largely a mental health and substance abuse issue. When you look at the readmissions into the jail, particularly those very short-term, you know, you come in, go out, not having committed another serious crime or a serious crime, I think is indicative of the need for the mental health services and substance abuse services to help those folks not be continually readmitted.
Okay.
Through the chair, if I may add, about deeper dives into data, because the, the data that Mr. O'Connell put together was, was quite a large task. We don't know some things, because we haven't, either we don't have the data, or we're still working on data sharing systems countywide, and that's one of the top priorities we have, is how can we better share data across the entire criminal justice system in a deeper dive manner that we've not been able to do before?
I just, one other comment on this point, I just, you know, I think to what Patrick said, but again, ways to, you know, divert, and, and I know it was mentioned, certainly probation and sheriff, but I think, you know, public defender has a program as well, and there are, courts have programs, and, you know, this is a pretty large universe with a lot of moving parts, of which we're a significant portion of that. Obviously, we have the responsibility for, you know, the in-custody portion of it, but as well as a lot of the human service delivery and, and portion of law enforcement. But I guess the point, because we're only one of the agencies, a large one, but we're not the sole driver, obviously, about who shows up to be booked, and what they're arrested for, and, and, and yet we're responsible on the social service side for delivery a lot of those services, whether they live in a city or in the unincorporated area of the county. And so I guess I'm curious as to whether we've heard from any of our other law enforcement partners about this, not just the in-county agencies, but I'm talking about, you know, the police agencies, obviously, you know, they have a certain duty and responsibility that they're sworn to do in their respective communities and, or service area, but that's a key piece. And again, you know, someone who's arrested for DUI, obviously, they're going to get, you know, booked in, but if there's other behaviors that occur in these communities, I mean, that's, again, part of what we can do, certainly is, you know, you know, colleagues of folks that are in those elective offices, and, you know, in the seven-city jurisdictions, but I, but I also, obviously, with police chiefs and with their forces, and, and, and But I also, obviously, with police chiefs and with their forces and, and again, you know, it's a big undertaking, but what we're being asked here is big in and of itself, and we're under a federal consent decree to meet that. So I guess I'm curious, any thoughts, you know, about that, about how we might, beyond just having a working relationship to incorporate that? And I, you know, I look to the CHP as well. I mean, obviously, you know, they're responsible in the incorporated area for traffic safety and, you know, and, you know, all that goes with that in the incorporated area, let alone on the highways and byways of this county and the region and the state. So I guess I'm curious, is there any thoughts about how we might impact that? Because again, I don't know what that subset is necessarily, but again, that could help us and still not have those communities be less safe or less responsive to the needs of our mutual constituents, because we represent all those folks in a lot of matters, so.
Yes. Thank you, Chair. I am and will continue to have ongoing discussions with the area law enforcement and police chiefs. Directly tied to one of Mr. O'Connell's recommendations is that these various departments and agencies throughout the county, perhaps they can, what we would say, process an individual in the field or in a different part of our very large agency where they can be photographed, fingerprinted, given a court date, things like that, so they don't have, the officer or deputy doesn't have to come down here to the main jail to do that and then be in a perhaps sometimes several hours long, again, what's known as the booking loop. And that's, there are a couple of advantages there. One, not everybody is being brought down for an already very stressed main jail, but also it frees up our law enforcement officers to get back out into the field quicker. So that's something that I very much think we need to work hard with our law enforcement agencies to see what other options we have, so not everybody has to be processed downtown.
And the alternatives or the wellness clinician team, they will respond both to the incorporated cities as well as the unincorporated area, correct?
They will, but that, and that will address the mental health needs. But if there is an arrest made, I think what Mr. Jones is talking about, to do a site and release in the field.
Right. Okay.
And I think that's one, maybe one part I can clarify too, is that, you know, in the back of the report, not to give you the, you know, I think I tried to kind of lay it out where here's why I think what I think, here's the kind of the data part to be useful to anybody to kind of look at it and understand it. But the last kind of third is about kind of specific kind of like recommendations tied to how many people are coming in, how long are they staying? If we use something like this to reduce, say, by 20, 30, 20% of these people might uptake this program, you divert that jail bed, but you create a new program. You need to have somebody supported for now 180 days, not just the two they were there. So I think a big part of this is you avoid 600 bed days, but you have to support a lot of other new kind of efforts to really support people for longer than just the time they would have spent in jail. And I think that's, and also there's a chance they will come back to jail. So I kind of tried to build in both like who you might be avoiding, but also the chance you're going to come back into the facility again for, you know, reasons that are beyond kind of anybody can really know without kind of targeting their, targeting the services. So it's meant to be a way to, one, line up some different specific ideas that a lot of different programs could fall under, but also give you kind of more information about how these things work and frankly, to anybody to say, I disagree with that idea, but I like this part. Take parts that you like and also to make sure we incorporate mental health needs into it, race inequity issues that will come up. If you target low risk people, sometimes that will have a negative impact on race equity. And I think those are all the things I tried to take into contact here, not just to, you know, take the low hanging fruit should be released, but how to make sure that doesn't have an effect on different populations in your community differently. And I also looked at regions. So also to say, if you like, you know, idea number one, let's say, how would that affect District Five? What's it look like for District One? Who are people, where are people actually coming from to say, I'd like this for my community, how would that impact, what's my part of this, my community's impact on the jail and how to do that? So that's kind of the last couple, I think, 10 or so kind of concrete ideas with some narrative to it, and then with some kind of basic ideas to start the conversation.
Thank you. See what it does.
No, I was just to chime in. Thank you, Mr. Chair. On that last point, we were just, this exchange with Mr. Jones and our county CEO is a decades, if not longer, problem for law enforcement is you know someone is committing a crime, for instance, out in the field, but you also know the person's larger problem is the mental illness or addiction they're facing. And our jails have, over time, become the default to deal with these things. And I just, something you just said kind of struck me because you said if we are going to invest in appropriate programs where someone can in the field encounter somebody who, you know, the officer may not want to cite and release them because it's a safety issue, but they're not a 5150, they're not an immediate danger to themselves or others. There are no other alternatives. There are, there are no other alternatives to take somebody. So I, and I think you were kind of alluding to this, if we invest in those other alternatives, it's going to be something that is going to be a longer term in order to truly make a difference for somebody and get them stabilized and get them into a place where they don't end up back on the streets and end up interfering or interacting with law enforcement again. But that's just something that strikes me in my prior career and in law enforcement today. I mean, that is just a major challenge. And law enforcement, they want that. They desperately want to have those places to take someone so it doesn't just become a revolving door and they have to keep interacting with the people again. And so, you know, I hope that's informing our discussion. And I think it's a good point to talk about having these things in different parts of the county as well, these kinds of programs. But throughout the course of all the, I've only been on this board a short period of time and all the discussions with this maze consent decree and how we comply with it, that has been something that has struck me as just a huge void that we have in this community. And we're not alone in the state of California. And part of it is policies at the state level that make that more difficult to do that. I guess my question would be to you, Kevin, what, any ideas or other best practices you're seeing in other places that have been considered here or that you think we should consider here?
Well, part of the work I did was actually to create an inventory. And I guess I, I think I'm reluctant to say like, you know, County X did this because it worked for them, because you're not different county. And I think that in California especially, we have all these, all the energy goes into small pilots, small little things here and there. But I think, you know, from starting this a couple of years ago, the inventory idea was to make, I kind of look at like, what are all the different things and processes and practices that are offered around the county? And I guess the thing I kind of saw was all the different things, all the boxes are there, the programs, the best practices, these things, but are they really connected operationally and policy wise? And just because it's a big county with big changes going on. And I think for me, what I kind of saw was a lot more growth in this capacity in the system to create diversion opportunities. I think there's a new diversion program relatively in the last couple of years to actually create a mental health diversion program for a broad, you know, population as well as people that are incompetent to stand trial. That's an innovation. That's new. Could we do more of that? Are there actually ways that the public would actually appreciate this? It'd be a different way to, people that do have mental health needs in the community could safely be released and diverted from the court process to treatment. How does that work? What would that look like regionally? And I think a lot of the work is really around systems change, not just saying a new program's going to fix all these different things and all these complex problems, but what can these systems do to work better together and to do less of things that might cause unintended consequences. Programmatically, I think the hard part is that a lot of social services are, you know, often are going to impact things about somebody's life, maybe like anti-poverty things can help somebody never enter the system. But oftentimes, it's, it's direct impact on recidivism is hard to state because if you give some, you know, earned income credits and things like that or income programs are great, but they're untested. You know, and like, you know, substance use obviously has an impact on somebody's long-term recidivism rates, but we don't know on any given day what that actual, for that person's going to be. So it's a little bit, it's not quite, just give them a program and they'll be better. You don't really know how long that'll take or the exact impact on the jail. So I think for the, to your question, which is a very, you know, is the right question, maybe I can work more with kind of the, with county teams and kind of see what they have and what they think is kind of ready to be scaled up and avoid kind of speaking out of turn a little bit on things that is, you know, going to seem kind of like I'm just choosing something out of the blue.
Kevin, if I could just follow on and in your report, as the appendix, you have the sequential intercept model and kind of this going down through from the 911 call to determinants throughout, I guess, the process. Could you just elaborate briefly on that and how you might, maybe this is already being implied, at least in certain circumstances here, portions of it, and you obviously delineated who might be the responsible party for that within the framework of the, of that intercept model. But were you suggesting this as part of the appendix as being something that we ought to adopt in whole or in part? And again, maybe it is, maybe Eric can answer this too, we're maybe using portions of this. But was it clear to me as to this is kind of a standardized model or this is something that through your research you've developed in looking specifically at Sacramento County? That wasn't real clear to me, so.
Yeah. I definitely did not invent it. It's been around for about 20 years. And actually, it's a way to kind of get, kind of look at how, you know, people connect to mental health services initially, but really the seriously mentally ill. But I think it also applies to behavioral health systems as well. But if somebody kind of goes through the court and the justice system in a linear way, are there enough kind of, let's call it off ramps and ways to kind of divert somebody or sort of makes it so it gets connected to treatment and services? I think actually it was 2018 or 2019, the county started doing work like this through, I think, collaborative work groups as to inventory and find out where to do it. I frankly came into this and said, this is a, you've already done all the hard work, let me just put it into a map and put it in a report. But I have done this in other counties, and I think it's a great tool for two complex systems and seeing them together, not as totally different worlds, but how does somebody move through the court process or, you know, as is the, and the justice process? And then in the community, what are the different things that different partners can do once someone is back in the community? And then also with that first line, what is, what are law enforcement's options to even avoid that booking altogether? And I think it's a great visual tool and it's a great way to inventory lots of things. And then if you want to attach, so what's the evidence of this even working? You can then kind of go more to say, great, we have all these tools in our, you know, let's say our mental health court toolkit, but who says that works? Great, it's been studied lots of times and it works great. How to kind of make sure you can see it visually, because you have a lot of programs, and how to make sure you can at least see it in a, again, a kind of logical flow in the justice process.
Great, Eric. Thank you, Mr. O'Connell. If I may, Chair, so Sacramento County has adopted the sequential intercept model. And by that, I mean the criminal justice cabinet, which have a lot of our partners. And as Mr. O'Connell stated, we're looking for those off ramps out of, out of the criminal justice system. And so the terms diversion and deflection. So often diversion is after, they've already been put in the system at some point, but we're trying to divert out through a variety of pathways. Deflection in my mind is not even getting them into the system to begin with if possible. So an example would be early on at the point of what they call zero or one within that linear model, which is how can I do a warm handoff of this individual that might be in crisis, might be having a substance use issue? And I get the warm handoff, so I don't need to do a citation or a booking even. So I think that what's known as that Sims model is very effective, and our criminal justice cabinet has adopted it.
And so when you say adopted, is now being, it's being put to use and we're collecting data behind that to know what we're having, I think, to what Kevin's point was, to know if you're succeeding and where the investments either have been made or need to be made?
We are working on that data collection, yes.
Okay.
And part of, I guess, the last couple of pages actually was kind of the roadmap of what I did, because part of the goal of this project was not to have a report that, you know, stands, looks great into early 2022, but also wait for the county to keep building on what they want to do, just from a technical and a research point of view. So the last, you know, kind of section, there's really more of a way to kind of get the county to say, here's how you go and merge information together, what you can use it for. And really, that's probably the part that's more of a technical appendix, but I wanted to kind of make sure that was seen as something that comes together with this, because to kind of know the questions you all have takes a lot of trust, a lot of kind of knowledge of each other's kind of operations, and then there's a technical part to it, but also can be the bridge to better service integration down the road, not just analytic questions, but also like whatever that warm handoff looks like, this data can be the start for that, but that takes a lot more work and a lot more, I would say, integration of services and talk.
One of the things I did note, just by way of, that there was a lot of responsibility for the data to, the source of that data being the sheriff's department. But it was seen to me that the source would also be the police departments, at least in the cases, if you're trying to deflect or divert and do something that, you know, again, it's not, doesn't, in the field, doesn't all just fall to the sheriff. And have we begun to put systems as assistant partners, the sheriff designing in concert with partnership to be a good reliable source as relates to this information, but also then see into it? I mean, because I see a lot of ends in here currently available being ends, being no, I guess. Is that's correct?
Oh, in the back, those are, this metrics, I mean, I think the search for metrics is endless. It's kind of like going to a restaurant and saying, we have hundreds of things we could do, but actually, how do we narrow it down to what would be useful to the questions we have? So I kind of tried to take what's in the sequential intercept model and propose a couple ideas of data I had access to. And I just, I would say that was more for discussion. It wasn't to say like, this is my, it was more to say, there's 50 things on there. Past 10 is probably too much, but it's a way to kind of give the county kind of a roadmap, and I got it. So that, or I had it.
Okay, that helps. Okay, thanks. Well, I, we've kind of, I think, hijacked your presentation off of one chart, so, but maybe some other things you want to cover as part of your, so go ahead.
Let me give the one minute version and get back to the agenda. I think the attention of the report was really not to say that, you know, I have all the answers as of 2020, early 2022, because COVID, I think, really changes any read of this report, because even though it's only been a year since the data was there, I guarantee you the composition of your jail has changed somewhat because practices that had either kind of been as a COVID response were not there, were not in place in, you know, when I got the data to actually now, things are still changing. I mean, I haven't looked at the population per se, but the composition and the study itself really was meant to be a point in time and then a toolkit to have a different conversation about the system issues and what really drives the population and kind of get away from the felony misdemeanor, pretrial sentenced, kind of those four things, and really say, well, what else is really here that we could build programs around, build partnerships around, and also keep having the conversation for, you know, however long we're all here. So that was kind of the idea behind it. And the way I kind of broke up the report was, first section's really on who gets booked in. Most of those folks, 55% don't stay, but what does that composition look like? Who's coming in and why and from where, just from a booking point of view? The next part is then who stays? What's that average length of stay for different people that are actually coming in contact with the jail and being booked in? Third section's then the daily population, which is really the pertinent question of this conversation. What is that daily population on every given day? And who is it made up of? How does that change as you get deeper into the system? And the fourth section was on reentry, and is a way to say, people do get out, I think 90 to 95% of all the bookings are released to your county. They're not going to state, they're not going to state hospital necessarily forever. They're not going to state prison, they're coming back here. So really, the impetus on the community is to say, how do we do, best do reentry across so many different types of cases, there's so many different places and parts of the county? And that kind of includes some work on the, what needs assessments are being done, what kind of risk assessments, different, kind of really defining reentry a little better because with 27,000 releases or reentry opportunities, there's a lot of different things there. But there's also things that are more targeted based on the population. So it's really a way to define what is reentry and why it matters. And the last section is really all those kind of, basically the recommendations are on how to reduce the population, kind of a two pager on each one of those ideas with kind of a concrete way to say, when would this come in place to reduce the population? Then what are some of the background pieces around how it might work? And also including like information about this, any racial disparity that might come from that kind of a policy. So the idea was to give you a lot of information about just the, who's in the jail and why, but then also lead to some concrete discussion about what could be done and then what are some of the moving parts as I saw them. And then the last part is that pretty sizable kind of technical appendix is a way to say, you know, keep doing what you're, keep doing what I started, and I'm glad to kind of have people keep, you know, keep on that work. So that's kind of the outline of the report. And I think a way just to kind of have a different conversation, different points in the system and not, again, not get stuck in the felony misdemeanor, sentenced, unsentenced, because there's a lot more to it. I think this broadens the discussion and it broadens the options.
Let me turn to colleagues. Questions of Mr. O'Connell at this juncture? I just had one follow on Kevin. So this goes to the discussion about the racial disparity, certainly as it relates to the overall representation of the African-American black community in jail. Any thoughts on that? I mean, you talked about a number of factors, you've even talked to, you know, just in alluding to some other issues, but I guess I'm curious and, you know, it's up there in number four, but it's pretty stark when you start looking at the numbers and the, not just a statistic percentage wise. So I guess, thoughts about that, that might be different than what we might look at from the, from my more general population, but certainly not to target, but also recognizing that, you know, the jail makeup and folks that are being incarcerated. So, any thoughts?
Yeah, I think when I looked at it, I mean, I tried to look at it from a perspective of, you know, where does that part, where does it start? And I think when you kind of look at the booking process, that's where the first instance you see of a disparity for the black population, about 34%, I think, and that's been reported elsewhere. That's not new information. Really, it doesn't change as you get deeper into the, into the system. So it's not like once you become, who stays to arraignment, still about 34% black, as you get to a sentence status, still about 34%. So really, like, it doesn't really change as you get, as you get kind of farther into the system time-wise, which kind of says, like, at the starting point, why is someone coming in and how are they being treated in the system is somewhat about, you know, what kind of crimes are being committed or being charged with? What are the kind of reasons they're coming in, and then what kind of support would they need at different points in their life to change that behavior? And so I would say, you know, from looking at it, the felony, felony population more disproportionately are black, I mean, just to put it out there, more coming in, booked in for felony crimes. And a lot of them, they're older and have a kind of a longer history, which, you know, I think as the system works, it's harder and harder to say, how do you kind of release that person safely, and how do you meet their needs when they might have a longer criminal history, you know, from the system? But oftentimes, those conversations are happening, now, what does that mean, and how do they get to that point? I think a challenge would be to reduce that, really have to kind of look at some, you know, felony-level crimes and say, how do we deal with that differently, and how to think about what kind of options are available for people. And I think that, that probably may be the big part, is a lot of them are coming in for crimes of violence or weapons charges, which are going to be more serious and more likely to stay past certain early points. And with a longer history, again, creates more, you know, more reasons why someone might stay in custody, but all the more to build programs that could be accessible to people when they're ready to change and ready to make those changes.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
So you mentioned that you would start by looking at booking as kind of the, I guess, the continuum of the process and protocols that are set in motion when someone is going to be incarcerated. But why wouldn't, why wouldn't we look well before booking? So why wouldn't we look at the geography of patrol? Where are, you know, where are deputies and probation officers concentrated geographically, perhaps based on, you know, just the history or having some understanding of where crimes have been committed in the past? It seems to me that if you just started at the time of booking, you're going to limit yourself to a lot of the contributing factors that may greatly influence the racial disparity in terms of who's actually occupying the jail, right? So any thoughts about that part of it?
Yeah, I mean, I think that is, you know, it's kind of the detection effect. If you're actually, if there are kind of like these geographic issues or past crime or individuals that are being, you know, kind of sought out, like, that will create its own kind of cycle. And I think it was more, I don't have, I didn't have, I mean, multiple different cities would have access to that, and I didn't have access to that. And also, because I think it's probably, I mean, would kind of be on the scope, but I agree, a lot of this starts in the community, which I think is a much more harder conversation and more complex. It's more to say, when they hit the jail, or they come to the jail, that's where that, that's the disparity right there. It's, you know, three and a half or four to one from your total population. Then from there, I think it's, people are, it's not really changing after that.
And if I may, Supervisor Serna on that. So that was the data that Mr. O'Connell was looking at. We know the, in fact, in that number four, it talks about how there are over 25 different agencies that are booking individuals. And so exactly as I think you stated, Supervisor, that we need to go back further prior to a booking. So an example is the information we're just posting here very soon are arrests and breakdown by race for various agencies throughout the county. So that's a first look, as well as traffic stop data. And we're seeing, not just in this region, but again, statewide nationally, we're seeing these disparities in the system at all of those stages. And so then the question is the Center for Policing Equity and other national organizations do is, is they, they look as to many various factors to that. For example, where are officers being deployed and why? What communities are calling police or more often than, than other neighborhoods, perhaps? Or why are certain neighborhoods having more police activity than others? So it really does go back quite far in that, in that spectrum.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Kevin, this juncture? Okay. If not, thank you for your body of work, Kevin. We really appreciate your efforts. Thanks. Okay, Mr. Jones. And for those that have arrived before I made the announcement, we're going to continue to take the presentations, board member questions, and depending upon where we are in the afternoon, we may take a brief break, but we're going to hear testimony from all the folks in chambers as well as on the phone. So I just wanted to, I know some of you have arrived as we've gone through the course of discussion. So please bear with us, but we've got an opportunity to address the board. Thanks.
Thank you.
So here we are really looking at, of the many things we've been discussing and the many different recommendations, really four key categories or themes for the criminal justice systems, the reports, also just issues and reforms that we know we need work on. So they fall into these four themes I mentioned in the opening, which is reducing jail population, reducing returns to custody, increasing diversion and deflection, and increasing services. And in all these areas, the county has made progress, but we definitely recognize there's still a lot of work to be done. And one thing I, I learned recently from a local advocate here in Sacramento County, future member of the Public Safety and Justice Agency Advisory Committee, is that of these targets, if you will, we need to establish process goals on how to get to these, in the correct directions for each of these, which is the how, and then our end goals, which is the what. What exactly, to what levels are we trying to increase or decrease these things? Peripheral analyses, and then checking for unintended consequences as we develop new programs, as Mr. O'Connell mentioned. Now, you'll see, as I go through these, these themes, they are color-coded. It's not meant to oversimplify it. It's a very complex situation, but at least to establish, you know, where we're making progress, where we're having more difficulty making progress, and where significant barriers are, are really, if you will, sort of like a traffic signal, like green, yellow, red. So green really means we are making some progress. Yellow, we still have a lot of work to do. Red, really, as you see some of them, means there are serious or significant barriers to forward progress. And a lot of these, you'll see here in the next few slides, we've already discussed somewhat, but I'll go ahead and go through these. So let's start with reducing adult, or I'm sorry, average jail population. These are areas where we believe the county has made a lot of great progress. And sometimes this isn't, isn't really known, because we don't really, haven't advertised it much or well enough. So the probation department's use of their public safety assessment tools, and this is to get individuals from jail to pretrial monitoring. The probation department implemented the adult supervision model by reorganizing caseload. There have been protocol adjustments to adjust bail amounts, collaboration by, and again, here's where multiple of departments, agencies, and offices need to be involved, district attorney, public defender, the court. Probation department's implemented their risk need assessment supervision model. There's been an expansion of various alternative services, and we're always looking for more, which is where I believe Mr. O'Connell's report is very helpful. But we have done the both probation and public defender pretrial programs, collaborative courts, both have been increased just recently in the budget cycle. And I mentioned this federal inmate contract reduction at the main jail as well earlier. Also with reducing jail population. And this is, again, more jail alternatives or entry programs are needed, and this is where we're going to continue to examine the carry group, O'Connell reports, as well as continue to receive community input on what else is out there, whether it be evidence-based practices, best practices outside of this area, what else can we look at? We talked about this, which is the booking practice changes that we believe are needed by all of the different law enforcement agencies throughout the county. Really, this again goes to two different pathways, which, number one, is even if the person is going to be arrested, can they be processed somewhere other than downtown? And then the other piece is Supervisor Desmond mentioned, is do we have other places to take individuals that just aren't jail, and a court date is not needed? And that's going to be based on substance use issues, crisis issue they're going through, where jail shouldn't be the only option. And to that, you know, our law enforcement partners agree with that, too. I hear from them a lot that they, they want another place to be able to take somebody who perhaps is in crisis.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah, I was gonna say, those two, those two are inextricably linked, obviously, because I think you would, would see a dramatic decrease in those booking practices if there was that alternative.
Yes.
Okay, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you. Just wanted to point out what I think is just an oversight in the, in the verbiage here, but on the, the red, the first red dot there, the Nochtan Lewis Report, where you're addressing capacity, I believe the footnote should read, any new facility would not add capacity, but rather would improve conditions.
Yes, that is correct, Supervisor. Thank you. It is, it is, it is to, in fact, the wording is corrected somewhere else in the presentation, but that's exactly what it is, is we're not looking to add additional beds. We just recognize that we need to increase or improve the conditions for those who are incarcerated. Thank you. And then these other topics here in the red just show, really, if you go down to the third one, it goes back to what we spoke about, which is the serious current barriers have been around the current facility and staffing restrictions.
Eric, if I could, just before you leave that slide, though, back to the first red dot there, the Nochtan Lewis Report. I guess one of the things that keeps running through my head, and I've said this before, is that even if you met, met the requirements to consent decree and compliance by adding 100 beds for behavioral health or for other health reasons, it still doesn't reduce the population in jail. It, it, so I guess that's what puzzles me, is that if you're not adding capacity, and we're doing lots of things, but if the need to, in order to get to compliance, is to reduce by X hundred, and we're doing some of that, you may point that out, how is it that you may help have better conditions in the jail for those that are there, and maybe better outcomes once they're released, but how does that reduce, I mean, where does that connection come in? That you're going to reduce population by, again, getting better, you know, you meet some of the obligations that we have on our consent decree. I get that, okay? But if you don't build more capacity, then you're still going to have the issue of too many folks in a confined facility. Or take RCCC, you can do certain things. So it would seem to me that with or without, you know, additional bed treatment space, I guess, for lack of a better description, my description, that you're still going to have this issue as it relates to what we've been talking about for the better part of the afternoon thus far. So I guess I'm curious, Eric, what your thoughts are on, on that, because again, we're not, you know, not going to accomplish that. And again, I know Nochtan Lewis points it out, Mr. O'Connell points that out as well, is that you still got this, you can shuffle things around, and you get one here, one there, 10 here, but you don't get to 1,000, no matter how you do the math, I don't think. Unless you got a different way of doing the math, or somebody does, so.
Yes, Chair, if I, if I, understanding correctly, I think, I think that is a major point here, is that to be within compliance of the May's consent decree. At this stage, there are 1,000 too many beds in the current main jail. And so there are a variety of ways to get there, which are other alternatives from getting in to the jail in the first place, and then also ensuring we have other places for them to go, perhaps other facilities for those with mental health issues that aren't, aren't in jail. But even if, going to Mr. O'Connell's report, even if a lot of those things were done, and every single partner signed off on it, and even if it all happened tomorrow, which is all unlikely, it still would not be enough to be able to meet May's consent decree.
And could I add to that? Also, the recommendation that we need to reduce the number of beds by 1,000, that is without the, any building of a new medical or mental health facility. So that's, that's what needs to happen if we're not going to build some sort of another facility.
But how does 100 medical beds get you to the, get you to 1,000, ever how those connections made? And that's what I get I'm puzzling over. And again, as I read through this and thought about it, and that, and that's the question that I'll have when this gets back to us again with a plan, which I want, you know, I guess we're all interested in the plans. But recognizing that it goes to the particular needs that have been identified, we know the conditions are not good, but how does, how does that, how does 100 medical beds get you to solving an issue where if you did other things, you get to, to the number of 1,000? So where, where's the, the bridge?
I actually can't answer that, but I can tell you what I think it partially is, and that is, the medical treatment beds need more space than a regular jail bed, because we're talking about issues of privacy and what you need for a suicide watch and space for the medical staff. So there's all kinds of other space issues that are at least somewhat resolved if you have a different place for those in need of medical and behavioral health care.
And I appreciate your response. I, I wouldn't even sort of disagree with that piece of it, but I would just say, maybe as a prelude to what you may bring back to us, that matrix of how that works will be critical. I don't put that off on you or necessarily Mr. Ahire, but somebody, at least in my view, will have to provide, you know, or offer an answer anyway, that, for at least for this board member, to, to see how that works in a way that is meaningful, one to those that would be incarcerated, but then gets us there, because this isn't just a one and done. This is, how this is going to function over time, both in the community, but also within the, within the framework of the, of the confined facilities, RCCC and main jails, so.
And the goal is to, even if, if we were to do a facility, would be to also do these recommendations that Mr. O'Connell made about continuing to reduce the jail population. I mean, they, they would go together, because it is important to reduce the population.
Well, they would have to. I mean, again, if you're going to have a plan, and so again, I just, maybe I'm signaling what, at least this board member's expectation of what that plan would present to this, to this board, obviously as a whole, and how that would, you know, again, be the, what would be the outline for then, how that gets us to, to better, not just to meet the consent decree, but how we get better conditions in the jail, but also hopefully better conditions within our community framework that help us do some of those things that avoid imprisonment, so.
Agreed.
Don, could I put a finer point on that? So this isn't the first time we've seen this, this footnote. In fact, it hasn't been a footnote before. And I'm, again, referring to the, the Nochtan Lewis bar there. We've been very consistent in telling the public, telling the media, telling ourselves, that this is not going to be at any point in time about adding beds, right? At least that's my, that's my feeling, that's my recollection. I see a lot of shaking heads, yes, up here. So I guess the finer point I want to put on this is that from this workshop, between the time of this workshop, hearing from the public, getting a better sense of options and opportunities, are we convinced by the end of today, literally this workshop, that that is going to be yet again a consistent objective, that we're not going to expect a plan that comes back and all of, you know, after more than a year of saying, no, this is not about adding beds or capacity, there's going to be, you know, an aha moment, perhaps not welcomed by, by many, that, oh yeah, this has to be about adding capacity?
Yes, Supervisor. It is a footnote here, but I wanted to just, and I'll come back. Oh, right here. It is a key point here that we, we decided to lift up, which is the last point, which again is, any new facility or facility renovations would not add incarceration capacity, but rather would improve conditions for existing populations.
And that's, that's a good reminder. I'm glad you skipped ahead to point that out. I just think it's incredibly important that we be consistent in our approach and not, you know, have some awkward watershed moment in the, in the course of coming up with how we meet the consent decree, where we say, you know, in addition to the, the mental health bays and the, and the general health infrastructure that needs improvement, regardless of, you know, capacity reductions or additions, that we all are on this, and I mean everyone, the advocates in the room here, the plaintiffs, the, you know, our legal counsel, that we all conclude that, you know, we're not going to keep as an alternative for us to consider actually constructing new beds somewhere else in a, in a third jail, so to speak, that this, whatever the delta is, this 1,000-bed delta, has to be met with anything except building new capacity. Does that resonate with this side of the room?
Yes.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
On reducing returns to custody, again, a lot of the work that's, that has been done, there's been a lot of, lot of public input over time. We need to do a lot more. We've been using, you know, here at the Board Supervisors, I already mentioned the Community Corrections Partnership, as well as its advisory board, Criminal Justice Cabinet, and there are work groups, of which there are a few, the Public Health Advisory Board, Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board, and their community, or I'm sorry, Criminal Justice Reform Committee, Mental Health Board, the Community Review Commission, which meets monthly and has been up and running for a few months now, as well as the newly developing Advisory Board for Public Safety and Justice. We've mentioned, and there's some overlap here from some of the other themes or categories, but this is again, an expansion of several of our various pretrial programs, risk assessment tool, again, the mental health and other diversion grants, the reentry programs. And then we did talk about this for a bit. This is the first yellow section here, which is, we have, have been improving county-wide data systems, and these are just a few examples, a lot of acronyms there. But it's, one exciting new tool is with the Social Health Information Exchange, and then the need to continue to establish other metrics of success, but also better county-wide data sharing, to go into many of the points that you, Chair Nataulay, had mentioned earlier. Because without the proper data, we won't be well enough informed for proper policy decisions. We need more return to custody recidivism reduction efforts. We recognize that. We've been partnering also with the Alliance for Safety and Justice to continue to examine best practices as On increasing diversion and deflection, again, we, a couple repeats here, but they On increasing diversion and deflection, again, we, a couple repeats here, but they, they overlap several theme areas, crisis receiving behavioral health and sobering center, the court calendar reconfigurations. So there's a lot of work that not, not only the Sheriff's Office and law enforcement agencies are working on, but also the courts. We have discussed right here, the need for additional psychiatric facilities and sobering centers, very important for the county. And then again, the need for additional alternatives for incarceration, which goes back to the deflection, the law enforcement deflection programs. The last theme is increasing accesses, access and services all along the continuum before, during, and after incarceration. So here, we've, we've talked about already, the sequential intercept model, that our criminal justice partners have adopted, and it helps us address gaps along that continuum of potential contact. Again, increasing the collaborative courts. Also, there's been the establishment of compliance units for the May's consent decree issues, both with the Sheriff's Office and Correctional Health. Sheriff's Office, Adult Correctional Health, together have increased our mental health screening. There's, we talked about the suicide prevention policy. The Sheriff's Office did just, they have some added software for, for example, if somebody in custody uses some keywords on a call that might indicate the person could be suicidal, its staff are immediately notified based on, on that computer system, so that's a new addition. Soon, or in progress, will be a new mental health urgent care clinic with 24/7 operations, and again, increased mental health screening. Continuing on, we did talk about the intensive outpatient program and the work that has gone on at both, here at RCCC. We're working on better, different alternatives to 911. So as you know, a lot of that is mental health crisis response. So mobile teams, and you had a presentation by Dr. Quist prior on that, so that, that work will help in all of these areas of needed reforms. Release from custody, linkages to services, so really what this, this has to do with is when an individual is released out of the main jail, are they just walking out without any linkages to services? That's a project that's ongoing, that we're working on with Correctional Health. And more mental and behavioral health services, Sacramento County psychiatric residential treatment facility. We talked about the Murphy's Conservates a little bit earlier. And then here again, we believe that additional facilities to better treat individuals within the county will help with all components or most components of the May's consent decree. So that leads me to the conclusion slide here, which is, again, the county has made progress in some areas, but we acknowledge there's much work to be done. Many programs have been put in place, and again, this, these are just a few examples of the information that you received here today. And then again, to Supervisor Serna's point, any new facility or facility renovation would not add actual incarceration capacity, but would improve conditions for existing population. So I'll just finish by saying this, that this is an opportunity to discuss this, get community input. Just want to go over again, that this is an informational item, and we will continue to go over these reports and come forward with a form of direction to bring back to you, direction for us, both facility-related, as well as alternatives to incarceration. And currently, we are examining a variety of facility issues. The Three West Project was one mentioned, but we need to really look at that globally, and also look at the feasibility of implementing many of those areas of the Carey Group Report, as well as the Kevin O'Connell Report.
Okay. Thank you. We have some supervisors in the queue, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll be brief, I know that there have been a number of folks that have been very patient here in chambers, and certainly probably dozens on the phone that want to have their three minutes, and so eager to hear their, their views on this. But I did want to extend my sincere thanks to Eric, and to Rick, and to Sandy, and to Sheriff's Department, and to Siobhan, and Anne, our public defender, everyone that has touched this in some way, shape, or form to get us to the point of today's workshop. This is one of the more complicated team efforts that I've witnessed in my time on the board, and there's a lot of moving parts to it, and certainly there's a lot of undercurrent to it, as well as kind of the general objective, how do you, how do you satisfy the consent decree? I think we all start from the same place, whether you accept kind of what options we're considering now or not, which is, we've had a jail that, a main jail that has been overpopulated for years, long before the consent decree, at least more so than its design capacity. So I think the consent decree really just puts a, a fine point and a, and a calendar to, to what needs to be done, by when. But I think, given all the professional executive team, staff that have worked collaboratively to, to inform this board and, and the public, I think it's really a kind of a model way of how to do it very methodically and a lot of forethought. And I just want to, before we hear from the public, express my thanks to everyone that's taken part to get us to this point. Thank you.
Thanks. Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. Probably for Siobhan, what's the current status of law enforcement drop-off for the mental health treatment center or the trauma center?
Currently, we don't take folks directly from law enforcement into the treatment center.
Right, that's what I thought. And for Eric, so the, maybe Rick, but probably Eric, the Superior Court in 2018 initiated a felony diversion program. And are you familiar with that? Is anybody familiar with that? Yes, thank you. I'd like to know, is that in place? I mean, still, I guess what I'd like to know more so, and I'm afraid I know the answer to it, or I'm guessing, is there data available, has been gathered to show the success or failure of that program? You know, how often has an application been filed that has been denied? You know, what are the typical reasons? You know, what is the, how often is it used? That type of information? And just see if, if that's something that is working or, or has ever worked.
Supervisor Kennedy, I don't have that information, but I will see, we do have Representative Ms. Sullivan from the courts, as well as Amanda Benson from Public Defender's Office, that might give us some additional information.
Good afternoon. So I can say, yes, our felony mental health diversion program is operational and has been since 2018. We also have a misdemeanor mental health diversion program. Both programs are full. We have, I don't know, I would have to defer to Amanda on how many applicants we have awaiting. The problem that we've run into is capacity for evaluations, and that has been the main hitch in the giddy-up for us. We do have data, I didn't bring it with me, but I'm happy to provide the data to the county administration, so you can see it.
And when you say that there's capacity issues for, what, what type of a professional is it that you're lacking to do that?
Amanda, it's more than one type of professional.
Okay.
Yeah, I can speak to that. We have been using a PhD psychologist, but we are also exploring social worker evaluations. The capacity really is getting that initial evaluation, and then the court, we, the application is filed, and the court makes a decision on whether the person will be diverted.
Yeah.
And so that evaluation is very important. We also work with Department of Behavioral Health on an assess, an initial assessment for their diagnosis. But then, in addition to that assessment, we also need a nexus report. The report is from the professional tying the alleged crime to the diagnosis. So that is limiting our ability to expand that program. But I do have some additional numbers also, on how many are pending and how many have been granted.
Okay. Could you give those?
Yes, I'm happy to give those. So in our felony mental health diversion, currently we have 77 that have been granted. Now, this is for our office, for the public defender's clients. There are private attorneys and CCD attorneys who may have additional cases. But we have approximately 237 that are on the waitlist or somewhere in the process to either have, they're either waiting for the initial assessment or for the nexus report, that we need both of those to finish the application. Some of those may have already had both of those and are waiting for the judge to make a decision on it. So it's somewhere in that process. For our misdemeanor mental health diversion, we have had 70, we have a caseload right now of 76 that have been granted, and 81 that are currently pending decision.
And is your capacity issue one of budget, or is it one of you have difficulty attracting and hiring, as we all do, people in these classifications?
Well, we contract, we have funding from the Department of State Hospitals for certain diagnoses, bipolar disorder, schizophrenia, and schizoaffective disorder. So there's certain diagnoses that we have funding through the Department of State Hospitals to pay for an expert, and we are still having issues with that, as well with not having enough experts, even though we have the funding. And we are exploring the social worker idea as well, and hoping that the court will be open to that type of assessment. So it is a work in progress. But as far as staff, we do have attorneys, we've, we've received money from the Department of State Hospital, but also received some, a growth request this year to increase our staffing with our pretrial programs, including mental diversion. We are growing. I anticipate eventually, if, as this program grows, that we will probably need to increase our staffing as well. But I, I do think it's more difficult with the, the social worker and the, the experts. We have had challenges with finding experts and, but, but we are working hard to, to find other solutions for that.
And can I just add, Supervisor, that it's, it's not just, it's not just folks with a licensed clinical social work background or a psychologist, but somebody with an expertise in forensics as well, which makes it more difficult.
Even more, yeah. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill. Before we go to, do we have any more presenters after Eric? Okay. So I wanted to ask a question since we invited them, but they didn't, they aren't here present, but on the monitors reports, which we're now getting copies of, there was, it kind of goes to my earlier question about facility improvements, but, but it goes back to the remedial plan, and certainly, you know, many on our team are familiar with that. And there's some really concerning, and I'll just reference the pages, basically page 21 through 27 in the July 19th monitors report as relates to conditions. This is the monitor for, let me see here, the right one. On the restrictive housing discipline and classification practices in Sacramento County jails. You know, I've, I've read the previous ones, and here we are, we're well into, I guess this, this was the third monitor report, if I'm not mistaken. And when I see comments by the monitor that, that say one, that in some, we continue to violate core provisions of the remedial plan with respect to the use of restrictive housing, we fail to exhibit the leadership necessary to change practices, set clear expectations for staff, ensure consistent decision-making. When I see comments like, that consequences of the deficiency of not making sure that we incorporate mental health input into disciplinary action has a profound effect on the people in the jail, those comments, and I could go on and on, I'm not calling those out to necessarily put anybody on a carpet here, but when we, when I see numbers that we've employed 197 people, all those positions are filled, custody staff, correctional health staff, and we still get monitor report as recently as less than two months ago, that were, in certain reference cases, some last summer, some this spring, I guess I'm going to turn to our folks and say, what are we doing to make sure that we, both our, our custody staff, our jail psych contractors, our folks are doing it the way that needs to be done under remedial plan? Because clearly, we're deficient unless the monitor is inaccurate. And so I guess I would turn to you, Rick, or whoever. I mean, I could read for 10 minutes here, and I think it would be a bit shocking. Now, again, there may be a second explanation, but when I talk about, when you talk about protective custody, administrative actions, you have people that, for months, one person spent 65 days in maximum custody when there was no explanation for it. You know, those, that's the conditions in the jail, and those are decisions that are made by people that are in charge of the operation of the jail. It's not the facility. And so that's where this board weighs in when it comes to the policy respecting the jail and how people are treated. And so I guess, again, I only ask you the question because maybe there's an explanation, maybe there's not, but this monitoring report, the third now, and we're still in this place in, in, in time? So I guess my question is, is that what are we doing to correct these things? And again, it doesn't all fall to your shoulders, you're the attorney representative of the county, and talking with the plaintiffs. This is the monitors report that went, that's the public report on the conditions.
So I believe you're referencing the suicide prevention experts report? Is that correct?
If it's the one in custody, I just read the title, it's the.
Is that from Lindsey Hayes?
It's the one from, it says, Second Monitoring Report on Restrictive Housing Discipline, Classification Practices in Sacramento County Jails.
I believe that may be from the class council. Regardless.
So that's their monitor? That's their count?
So the, six areas are monitored by different experts. There's a medical expert, there's actually two of them, there's a mental health expert, there's a suicide prevention expert, and then the other provisions or remedial plans are monitored and reports written by class council. They are the subject matter experts, if you like, and I believe what you're reading from is one of theirs.
It is, okay. That, that, okay.
And I acknowledge, and I believe the Sheriff's Department behind me would acknowledge that there have been instances where we have not complied with the consent decree. Those are discreet instances, but they are still troubling. And when we have been made aware of them, the Sheriff's Department, specifically the compliance unit, works very diligently to rectify those. And in these instances, when we were notified of those, Sheriff's Department, jail psych services worked very hard on that individual case. Nonetheless, appropriately, it shows up in our monitoring report. It is an area that we continue to work on, but it, I certainly can't sit here and say that it was acceptable or that it didn't happen.
Okay. No, I appreciate the explanation, because again, you know, these are, you know, people who obviously are in custody, and, you know, decisions about where they're housed, how they're treated, they're all made by somebody besides themselves, and they obviously, some of them may have, they have counsel represent them. But again, I just, I, that section, when I, when it talks about, you know, it's not just a facility, it's about the way people are treated, and, and how they're, you know, either accommodated or not within the confines, obviously the rules that, you know, govern the, the, you know, the jail and its, and its day-to-day operations. But so, could I take from your comments that, one, we're certainly aware of this, that there are corrective actions, and that we could have some level of confidence that the next report that comes out, which either do quarterly, is that right, or biannually?
Every six months, 180 days. But I should say that, for everyone listening, that COVID, if you were to say, okay, the consent decree was ordered in January, so we'd expect July, COVID threw those schedules off. And also, we learned that it was probably not the best plan to have the county report in 180 days, and also expect a report back from the subject matter experts in 180 days. So the reports are now have been a bit staggered, they're not going to fall exactly every 180 days from January 20th. But it is every 180 days that the county does a self-monitoring report, and we get somewhere after those reports, a report from the subject matter experts. But to your question, Mr. Chair. But to your question, Mr. Chair, I want to take a step back. Those discrete instances show up in these reports. But before that, and what is going on almost every day, is that either the medical experts, sometimes the mental health expert, the suicide prevention expert, or class counsel will be reaching out either to me or to the sheriff's department, ACH, Correctional Health, directly saying, we have a concern here. And when we get those, we take them very seriously. We react as quickly as possible to get whatever information or to correct the, whatever obstacle an inmate or bad, inappropriate condition they are facing.
So could I just take from that, Rick, that, and you just talked about, if you learn something, or someone brings it to the proper person's attention, that then it's triage. So our correctional health folks are on an equal footing with custody staff when it relates to the analyses that goes into determinations about both, you know, I guess, a risk assessment of some, whether it be for the person or for other folks that are incarcerated. Because what this pointed out in this report, and I trust you've been through these probably with a fine-tooth comb, that, you know, that sometimes it's either, you know, not regarded in the decision that's made in the moment, or, you know, there's a turnover in staff every so many hours and so forth. I guess, and maybe this is for Siobhan too, that is correctional health respected and consulted in their advice taken seriously in the context of day-to-day jail operations?
The short answer is yes.
Okay.
The more nuanced answer, specifically in respect to that report, is that it's absolutely accurate that we did not have the provisions of the consent decree that require mental health staff to be part of the disciplinary process and completely in place at the time that was reported. That since that time has been corrected. It was already the case at RCCC, which I think is, probably was a little bit easier for them to ramp up, but now it's in place at the main jail as well. And I'm extremely hopeful that we will never see that particular incident in a report again.
Okay, thanks, Rick. I see Sandy and Siobhan.
Good afternoon, Sandy D'Amiano, Director of Health Services. I just wanted to add that when we developed our restricted housing and our mental health reviews, we did comply with the consent decree. We had our sheriff's partners weigh in to that process. So that was all approved by the experts. Additionally, we have several quality improvement committees, and we have multidisciplinary meetings in terms of our patients that are in ADSEG, acute psych, or IOP. Sheriff's partners are involved with that. We do state in our policies that it is the mental health professionals' recommendations they must take into account for the sheriff's partners. We are doing QI involvement as well and staggering staffing. In the June growth request, you did approve, I think, 11, part of our contract has 11 more staff for mental health to do more of these placement consults and discipline consults.
And I think you highlighted a really good point, sort of Rick, that, you know, having the policies in place, having the agreement at the levels of, you know, the, you know, the jail administrative staff, certainly, you know, you, Sandy, Siobhan, and others. But where it really meets the road is if it's carried out in practice. And if it's not, then corrective actions are taken so that it's clearly understood.
Correct.
These are serious because they relate to the conditions which we have people in custody. And, you know, certainly the rules that govern, you know, as I said, all the aspects of the jail, but certainly as relates to people's health and restrictive housing, administrative housing, protective custody, you know, segregation and all the things that go with that. And the role that correctional health, because in my view, that, you know, that elevation needs to be commensurate with the day-to-day operations of that jail. Certainly, sheriffs, you know, have the custody responsibility and for movements and such other things in the jail that they're responsible for. But that correctional health staff is key to us meeting not only consent decree, but I think improving conditions in the jail long-term.
Correct. And Mr. Jones, I think in his PowerPoint also said, we've had to do a lot of training on the remedial plan ongoing. And as we get inquiries or refine gaps in care, that's when our staff, as well as the sheriff's office, are meeting with their lower-level staff. And sometimes we're coming together to train people.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. Siobhan, did you want to add anything?
Chair?
Yes, Eric, go ahead.
Okay. So, yes, Chair, you bring up a point because we, we've talked a lot about facilities and programs, but we didn't talk so much about people that are, that are supposed to be doing, following the May's consent decree. And really comes down to five key things, which are policy. And that's great, but if we're ensuring folks are following policy, that's where leadership, accountability, training, and oversight come in. And we are working on, there's been training going on, but we're working on a very comprehensive training plan. So all staff within the sheriff's office and adult correctional health, at both the management, a supervision, and aligned staff, understand all of the components of the May's consent decree.
Okay, well, that's positive to hear then. Okay, so unless there's any other questions by colleagues or comments, as Serna said a few minutes ago, we do have a number of folks that have time to speak. So we're going to go ahead to the folks that are certainly in chambers and take those comments, and then we may have, I don't know, a number of folks. How many do we have on the phone?
We have about 15 right now.
15, okay. So well, let's, we're going to dive in for the purposes right now, starting with the public testimony, and we'll, we may take a break. It's somewhere along the line, but we're going to go to the folks that are in chambers. And again, just to remind you, we're going to allow three minutes per speaker, and please do your best to adhere to that so everybody gets a chance to speak. So with that, I'm going to take the first three I have here. Mackenzie Wilson, Liz Blum, and Dan Aderhold are the first three, followed by River, Holstich, and Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. Those are the first five, so. Yes, you can. That's right. Okay. Good afternoon, Liz.
Hello.
Hello, Liz.
Okay, my name is Liz Blum, and I'm a co-founder of Decarcerate Sacramento. Many of you already know that I am personally impacted by this issue in many ways. But most importantly, I'm here today because I deeply care about the future of this county. I've read virtually every public document related to the May's consent decree, as well as the consent decree itself, for what it's worth. And throughout many years of doing this work, I have come to understand the complexities of this lawsuit and the interconnected systems involved. I share this board's desire to improve the way our loved ones and community members are being treated inside Sacramento County jails, but I know that a building will not help us accomplish that. The most recent monitoring reports released this year, which are completed by court-appointed experts, who by the way, are not positioned to profit from the results of their reports, describe in horrific detail how jail staff are failing to follow their own policies. For example, sheriff staff do not consult with mental health staff before deciding to punish someone for behavior that stems from their mental illness. All transgender and intersex people are systematically housed in conditions that amount to solitary confinement solely on account of their identity. Ooh, and that's still happening. Please tell us how a new building will prevent this harm. The July 2022, whoo, it's not expected. The July 2022 report also names that staffing shortages are endemic and prevent mental health staff from providing adequate input into the disciplinary process. If jail staff cannot even follow or document their own procedures, a new building will not improve mental health treatment. I'm good. May's plaintiffs' counsel stresses that staffing shortages are simply a reflection of jail population. At a smaller population level, existing staff could provide more extensive and less superficial treatment. And while there are many more facts I could share, I want to go back to March 10th, 2021, at the board meeting where you all made a promise by voting to deny staff's recommendation, effectively halting the plan to build an annex of the main jail. You all made a promise. You acknowledged that the best way to improve conditions and meet the May's consent decree was by reducing the jail population urgently. And yet, what has been done since then to treat this issue like the crisis that it is? Mr. Serna, you said 95% of the time, there's a strong case that's made early on about going in a particular direction and that you didn't hear any public support for this project. You acknowledge that your constituents deserve more time for, for the county to consider how we can affect the culture and behavior between jailer and prisoner before deciding to build an extremely costly facility. And yet, the county has continued to only consider that option. We have spoken with professional architects who have reviewed the blueprints of the jail and the May's consent decree, who do not agree with Notton Lewis's opinion. And yet, your peer review was not done by a different architecture firm or anyone with localized knowledge of the May's lawsuit. Mr. Kennedy, you said in March of 2021 that when you read some of the compliance reports, you're convinced there are so many things we could do from an operational standpoint. You said we should exhaust all the things that we need to exhaust when it comes to improving how people in the jail are being treated. And so please help us understand what efforts have been exhausted over the past year. Because from my perspective, the county has continued to exhaust all efforts to justify a new building while people continue to die in the jails. It may not be easy to hear this, but some county staff have actually been working against the interest of reducing the jail population. County council, I'd like to just display this letter really quickly.
Need to conclude if you could.
Almost done, thank you. County council stated in a letter to May's plaintiffs' counsel on March 8th, 2022, that jail population reduction is not necessary. But the county, which I was surprised wasn't mentioned, the county is legally required to create a plan for jail population reduction measures by December 15th. It's important to note that county council has severe conflicts of interest because they represent the sheriff's department and every agency that this impacts. So they cannot create an unbiased solution. The county has spent the past year and a half theorizing with consultants about what could be done to reduce the jail population instead of focusing on policy changes and ramping up capacity for effective prevention and diversion programs that would reduce the jail population. So in conclusion, any proposal to revisit building a jail annex is premature at best and at worst, questions the integrity of this board.
Thank you, Liz. Okay, Mackenzie, and then Dan Aderhold, and then River.
Dan actually left, and he did say he wanted to yield my time, but we'll talk about that some other time. But that means me and Liz could just eat it, you know? Good afternoon, Board. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, and I think I need to start out by saying that folks are not advocates. They are plaintiffs' councils, and we are experts. The lawyers representing the class action May's v. lawsuit stated in a letter to the board that while remediation of physical plant deficiencies is essential, the May's consent decree does not require the county to build additional jail beds or engage in any particular form of construction. It meets, it requires the county to meet minimum conditions for the people it chooses to incarcerate. And I appreciate some of the things on that list in the green, the yellow, and the red, because some of that stuff is actually due to our advocacy, and most of it, we've actually told you for free of charge and speaks to our expertise. The study did not look at the, how the jail could be retrofitted if the jail population was actually decreased. In fact, Notton Lewis increased the population on the words "assumption" that the facility could be at capacity. And they did not look at RCCC at all in their considerations, meaning we have all of the kinds of possible space for this stuff to go. And when 44% of your jail population should be reduced to meet the compliance, and almost half of the jail population is in there on a technical violation of probation, not a crime, it really sounds like we could immediately let all those folks go home and then rework probation and the pointless hurdles and ridiculous rules they place on people's lives. They are driving mass reincarceration for all those who are loving probation. The three top incarcerators of the jail, they didn't tell you this, are SACPD, CHP, and the sheriff, meaning that we only have to talk with, right? We have to prioritize those three who we're going to go talk to, knowing that one of them is us. Stop playing, y'all. Be honest. Which means that you can start with those three agencies to support diversion and reduce jail bookings. And what are these felony charges? I need to name that welfare fraud is a survival crime, and that's considered a felony. Growing number of folks found incompetent to stand trial means that the jail is being used, as we've told you, free of charge. Mental health crisis, it's being used to treat mental health crisis more than ever before. And that means we need mental health services and psychiatric beds in this compute, in this community, not a jail. It should be named that the RAND study didn't include the jail population and that county council ended the policy that allowed for folks to be transferred from the jail to Schmidt. I guess I'll finish by saying, we told you so. We came in here three years ago, not saying, not just saying, stop your jail expansions, but build up diversion, access to services, and the amount of housing and services and food access this county funds and needs to provide. We don't need a new mental health jail. We need more mental health hospitals and 24/7 neighborhood crisis centers. I think I will end, ooh, cool, I'm out of time, y'all. All I've learned today is that we spent our tax dollars to hear again that we need to drastically reduce our jail population. And I thank you for the talking points we needed to stop your expansion and prove you wrong. I want to, one off, these monitoring reports have looked at this, and have looked this way since they started. And so these are not one-offs and speaks to the culture that you'll keep, that you keep trying to build walls to, walls for. And then my final one is, somebody pointed out in our group chats that I love to read to y'all because it's how we bring all those dope voices in here, that cops want programs to take people to, but they ostensibly don't use their, don't want their massive budgets cut so we can provide them? Question mark. What a conundrum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, following Mackenzie, we have River Holstich, then Corinne, and then I believe it's Gary, I'm not sure of the first name, so, River.
Hi.
Hi.
So I'm not going to pretend to be as familiar with the people who have gone before me. But I did call in in March of last year, and I was really surprised that this was a thing that we are doing again. I'm surprised to sit here and hear what we haven't actually done? Like, what actually have we done to reduce and avoid trying to build another jail? Like, I haven't actually heard anything, you know, that we're, why aren't we trying to reduce the amount of people in prison? And like, what other solutions besides jail expansion have we actually gone through and tried? It doesn't address the staffing issues or any of the problems in the report that we talked about. I mean, I just was looking through it on my phone earlier, and somebody was in solitary confinement for 23 or 23 and a half hours a day. How is that, in any world, going to help somebody? Especially if you're having a mental health crisis. What helps people in a mental health crisis is community support, access to resources, having their basic needs met. How is 23 hours in a jail cell going to help those people? I'd go crazy from that alone. Also, how are we, you guys emphasized that this is not going to be used to increase capacity, but I don't think that I trust that. I mean, you said earlier that this was, that we were going to do something other than this. And now I'm just supposed to believe that you're not going to use that space for more people? Especially that it's, you know, we're, we're taking the opinion of the firm itself that they're going to make money off of this. And I'm supposed to believe that they have our community's best interests in mind? I just, I don't, I feel like we're all smarter than that. Yeah, so I, I don't know. I, we have money, we have the resources to invest in things that will actually help people. And I really urge you to look into those and not more jails.
Okay, thank you, River. Thank you for your comments. Okay, next, Corinne, and then followed by Gary, I don't, I can't tell the first name, so I don't want to mispronounce it, and then Tamara Lacy's the next after that, so. Hello, Corinne.
Hi, is there a way to lower this?
Sure, you can do that right at the fingertips, there you go.
Thank you, Flo. Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
My name is Dr. Corinne McIntosh-Sacco. My pronouns are she/her. Usually I don't throw around the title doctor, but looking at who's here today presenting on this, I think I'm the only doctor in the room. And I am here on my own time. I have the privilege of being a licensed psychologist in private practice, so I can make my own schedule. And it was a priority to me to carve out the time to be here, leaving my son in daycare, to be able to lend my expertise on this issue because I see attorneys and I see law enforcement. And I'm hearing a lot about mental health, and I'm the only mental health professional here in the room besides those with lived experience, so that part. I also serve as the chair of this county's mental health board, as well as the president of the Sacramento Valley Psychological Association, and I'm a resident of District 2. Today, I come before you as a community mental health advocate, standing in solidarity with the community leaders and organizations that are urging you to resist even considering the construction of a new jail facility, and instead Sacramento County must prioritize robust and sustainable funding for community services and programs designed to prevent recidivism and reduce the need to incarcerate people who are homeless or have serious mental illness. Using a new jail to manage people suffering from mental illness does not improve their quality of life, no matter how new the facility is. Conditions inside the jail serve to exacerbate their symptoms and lead to further deterioration of their mental and physical health. Some individuals who were considered mentally healthy prior to their arrest develop mental health symptoms once they are in jail. Depression, memory problems, difficulty concentrating, irritability, and anger are just some of the more common mental health issues experienced. And while those people remain incarcerated, their loved ones suffer negative effects on their physical and mental health, like higher rates of heart attacks, strokes, asthma, and high cholesterol. Likewise, having a loved one incarcerated increases a person's chance of experiencing homelessness and raises rates of alcohol and drug dependency. So, any impact that the criminal justice system has on our neighbors, it has on us as well, because the continued criminalization of people with mental illness negatively impacts our overall community health. Now, I agree with Knott and Lewis that a paradigm shift must occur, however, not the one they propose. We must stop looking to law enforcement to serve as behavioral health and social service providers. It's too expensive, they're not qualified, and deplorable conditions and inhumane treatment results from this negligence. Now, in March 2020, the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors created an alternative to incarceration office in their chief executive's office, which includes a strategic plan to implement what they call the Care First, Jails Last approach countywide. This comprehensive, meaningful, ethical, and evidence-based approach to supporting people before they even come into contact with the criminal justice system while also focusing on supporting those within the criminal justice system to ensure better outcomes for individuals and communities is a model that I encourage Sacramento County to follow. Now, class counsel has stated they're prepared to pursue enforcement litigation in federal court for this county's failure to take action and being derelict of their duties and making strides toward consent decree compliance. It's dangerous and it's irresponsible for this board to perpetuate the same tired plans and to drain taxpayer dollars in unnecessary litigation while the crisis that is the Sacramento County jail system only gets worse. When a system operates in a chronic state of stress, such as the county's straws have been deemed, it will always be in dysfunction, no matter how new the building is.
That's okay. Okay. All right, next, I don't know, is it Cesar Gary? Or we have the name.
And then he actually had to leave.
He did.
He may try and call in.
Okay, very good. Okay, good. Thank you, Mackenzie. Okay, Tamara Lacy? And then Tamara's followed by, is it Ruphia? Ruph? So.
Hi.
Hi.
My name's Tamara Lacy. I'm a long-term resident of the county, and my family is being adversely affected by a loved one in the Sacramento County jail with the mental illness being criminalized instead of getting treatment. The plan to expand jail is a contradiction to jail reduction. So, this isn't just about jail expansion plan, but how decisions are being made in the county government. Once again, the county seems to be breaking promises made on March 10th, 2021 to explore solutions other than jail expansion. We can't trust the architectural companies. Why aren't they talking about residential treatment programs? That's what many of our people in the jail need. We need residential treatment programs. My grandson right now needs a trauma-focused residential treatment program. He's been in jail for a year and nine months.
Wow.
Waiting, waiting for proper services while his arm goes numb on a bed where he feels the cock springs underneath. So, our community needs residential treatment programs, not jail expansion.
Thank you, Ms. Lacy. Okay, next person I have, again, I don't want to mispronounce, is it Ruphia? Ruph?
Oh, I think it was Raphael, and he.
Raphael?
They were sitting here.
Okay, all right. Okay, up to the side, thanks. Okay, next in CJ Walton, followed by Robert Sanders.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I admit I'm emotional about this. I too have a JD, and my doctorate in law would teach me to approach this differently, but I also have. I have a cousin who's really never been free. He was arrested at 16 and basically spent his whole life in and out. And one of the things that we noticed when he first came out of jail, a big man, so he looked older than 16, he came out of jail traumatized, and I haven't seen him since. Oh, I've been in the room with him often, but I haven't seen the person that went to jail since. And what that means, and now he's 63. And now, what that means is I worry about people in the county. I've had the occasion to talk to people in jail, and they talk about their anxiety. One person even told me I had no, I, no reason to commit suicide, but now I understand why people do. It is the boredom, the loss of purpose. It is waiting and waiting and waiting. Now, I'm going to ask you kindly to remember, you are not the Board of Supervisors for jail. You are the Board of Supervisors for the county. And what that means is you cannot put those who have no voice, and in this process, where did the people who are actually experiencing jail get to talk about what's needed? Where did that happen in this process? Because it seems like we're the only ones talking for them. And so, you, as the county board, must remember, the care that can happen inside a wall can happen outside of the walls. You actually have the power to set up a hospital instead of a jail. You actually have the power to make more healthcare, urgent care, 24/7 emergency care outside of the wall. You have the power to do that. Not many people have the power. You cannot put the voices of those who you haven't even heard against those who are probably representing, what? I don't know, $4 to $6 million in mortgages and cars? They have a reason to keep this business going. And their business is our family. So, I am asking you that if you want to invest, invest outside of the jail. Thank you very much.
Thanks, CJ. Okay, following CJ then is Robert Sanders. Robert, and then June, and then Camille. Hello, Robert.
Hello. Good afternoon.
We raised it.
Thank you.
May not, may not go high enough, but you're a tall guy. You're a tall guy. All right. Go ahead.
Gets a new record. Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Robert. I'm a resident of Sacramento County, and I'm really just concerned about the future of our community. Because not only are people currently suffering, but with the jail expansion, we're sinking so much financial resources into continuing the suffering. And not only that is, what about our youth? This community is not just adults. There are people that will grow older to be adults, and they'll be put into this cycle in which they will continue to suffer. So, not only would this jail expansion create more financial gain, I mean, more financial ruin for the county, but only, it would also create a future in which there aren't really any options for our future youth to succeed, to grow, to nourish, and thrive, but there would be jails for them, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Robert. Okay, so, next, June. I don't have a last name, June. And then June, then Camille O., and then Nikki are my last folks who have signed up in chambers. I know we have a number of folks on the phone, so.
It's a little tall for me. Thank you very much. Good afternoon. My friends and I aren't here just because of the jail expansion plan. We're also here because of the decisions that are being made in the county government. Once again, the public has been lied to, and the county is breaking promises made on March 10th, 2021 to explore solutions other than jail expansion. May's plaintiffs' counsel has said that staffing issues in the jail are endemic, or in jail, yeah. They will always be there. So, building a new jail annex will not solve staffing shortages and therefore will not meet the consent decree. Only population reduction will. The lawyers presenting the Class Action Maze lawsuit stated in a letter to the Board that while remediation of physical plant deficiencies is essential, the maze consent decree does not require the county to build additional jail beds or engage in any particular form of construction. The court-appointed neutral experts and class counsel have repeatedly called for jail population reduction. Significant and sensible reduction of the jail population is a critical step towards compliance of the consent decree and resolution of the May's litigation. According to the O'Connell Report, 40% of people entering the jail are therefore arrests related to breaking rules, not laws, and instead of allegedly committing new crimes. And this number is aligned with a 44% named by NNL that the jail population would have to be reduced by to meet the consent decree without a new jail annex. The total jail annex cost would also be at least $1.016 billion over 25 years, and... And the Sacramento County has shown that it is, although it is willing to invest hundreds of millions, if not more, in long-term housing, or long-term locked facilities, but not long-term affordable housing. And 30% of the people released from the jail are unhoused, meaning that more than 10,000 releases per year, housing could be needed on release. Why won't the county prioritize meeting the May's consent decree without a new jail building? Thank you.
Thank you, Jay. Okay, so, next, next is Camille O., and then Nikki, and those are the last two speakers I have signed up in chambers. So, if there's anyone else that wishes to speak, please get a form to Lydia so she can get it to me, otherwise, then we'll go to the phones, so. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My friends have mentioned a lot of the things that are important to us. I heard many of you mention mental health and substance use issues, but rarely have you mentioned the link to adequate and available housing. A Yale study recently showed that Housing First programs are incredibly impactful to those involved, and some of you have also mentioned that there are plenty of programs, but a lot of structural change needs to be made. So, I think that with it said, that you have the power to make that structural change. Increasing the priority on housing is incredibly important. Studies have shown that real integration of housing of different professions and backgrounds promotes social solidarity, reduces crime, improves health, increases social mobility, avoids ghettoization, and alleviates the kind of pervasive boots of detachment, disenfranchisement, and alienation that characterize the reputations of most of the US's left behind areas. I'd ask you to consider that.
Great. Thank you, Camille.
We do have talking points in case they're necessary here, but I think y'all have an idea of our perspective. It's not new. We've been having this conversation for quite some time. We're really, really interested in some of the new information shared today. I'll say, I know we go really hard on what's missing, and that's our job, right? I do want to say that some of the information shared today is so important, has never been brought forward, is literally what we've been asking for for years, and needs to take that next vital step of process, implementation, and impact for our community, okay? We can't have years more of slides that say what we need to do. We know, we know, we need to decrease bookings. We know, we need to decrease length of stay. We know, we need to increase diver, like, these are things we've known for years. We've been saying for years. It's been, it's been said not just by us, but by experts for years. I mean, the Carrier Report is now years and years old. So, the idea that between this last time we voted on this tower and now that we haven't engaged in that process, that implementation and impact, and until y'all do that, this is such a nonstarter, not just a nonstarter, but literally, it feels malicious. I know it might just be lazy on the part of county staff to just bring back the same plan over and over again, but it actually feels malicious. It feels like, and here's something I do want to share because I know that we've talked about this, there are going to be people in the jail with mental health crisis until we figure out a totally different solution, which we've talked about, individual crisis respite centers in all the neighborhoods, that'd be so important, a place for people to be taken instead, right? We know that. We know we need that. So, where is it in the budget? Let's get it, you know? Like, we've, we've known that those solutions are the solutions, but we continue to sort of like budget and allocate in a way that doesn't prioritize them as the solutions, but we know they are, right? So, we really need that, that process, implementation, and impact to be on the table actively happening. Imagine all the county energy that went in to building this, that could have gone in to implementing these strategies. We know what works. There's plenty of evidence-based information about what works out there, and it's a choice. It's a policy choice. It's an administrative choice, I'll say, because I'll say that the board did make a policy choice to move in that direction, and I commend you for that. We commended you for that last year, but county staff has, administration has not made the policy choice to implement what was asked. Otherwise, we would have significant reductions in the jail population here all these months later. We wouldn't have seen it go down with COVID and spike right back up after those initial releases, right? Because there's been no commitment. There's been no commitment from, from the players, and we really need that commitment. And finally, what I'll say is that there is no way to provide therapeutic mental health care within the jail, okay? I don't care what your building looks like. It is not going to be therapeutic. It is always going to be better on the outside of those walls every single time. And finally, if, even if we had a new building, what, what's left of the hundreds and hundred thousands of people in the main jail, they are still going to be subject to all the violations, all the violations, all the violations, all the torture that is outlined in the monitoring reports. So, even if you have this new building, you're going to leave those people in those conditions, and you're going to continue to be out of compliance until you close that building down, okay? Until you close down the main jail, you're going to stay out of compliance. And I thank the monitoring reports for that, or not the monitoring reports, your expert reports, for that really lovely information that truly, there is no way to be in compliance in that building. You got to shut it down.
Okay. Thank you, Nikki. Okay, thank you to all of our speakers in chambers. We have a number of folks on the phone, so we'll, let's keep moving into those. We have about 15, you said? Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and start with our callers, please.
Okay, please transfer the first caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, members of the Board, County Executive Edwards, Director Jones, this is Michael Alt calling today on behalf of the Downtown Sacramento Partnership. We re-
No.
Can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead, Michael. Continue.
I can, thanks. We represent the 66 blocks within the downtown core. The main jail serves over 25 different agencies across the county, located at 6th and 9th Street, is simply in the heart of Sacramento. The criminal justice issues and reforms related to the county jail continue to have a close relationship with the ecosystem. a close relationship with the ecosystem of the central city and those who live, work, visit, and do business here. We think the report before you today shows a clear continuation of current operations is simply unsustainable. Necessary capacity to increase essential services and provide adequate facility is keeping, improving current conditions is critically necessary. A reduction of the current capacity by 44% without additional services and accessible facilities would be detrimental to the individuals and to the fabric of our community. While services are needed to reduce recidivism and increase diversion, we cannot ignore the need to provide appropriate accountability measures to ensure public safety and justice within our society, specifically our downtown core, which is the economic driver that moves our region forward. We ask that you have a balanced approach to addressing capacity within the criminal justice and social service system that supports the individual and ensures the well-being of the neighborhood downtown and throughout this entire community. As you move forward, we continue to ask and partner with you to address truncated release times, implementing release from custody, linkages to services, enhancing community reunification programs, and building capacity for acute and subacute mental health services. The Downtown Partnership continues, stand ready to work with you in concert with our partners at the county, with your staff, to ensure the accessibility and safety for all is at the forefront of realizing the full potential for this community and for downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Liz. I'm calling because I think that the answer to this issue is to reduce jail population, not to build another facility. How can we trust the architectural committee, the firm that would profit from this project, when their study didn't even explore how the jail could be retrofitted if the population was reduced? And the population can be reduced. It's a critical step towards compliance with the consent decree and resolution of maze litigation. And further, mental health facilities and mental health support for the community would better serve our community than more jails. People who have mental health crises don't need to be in jail, they need community support. We've also seen that some county staff have worked to worsen the problems in the jails to further justify their desire to build a new jail building, and that's not acceptable. We really should not be building a new jail just because people will benefit from having a jail. The best thing is to reduce jail population, and that would be the fastest, most effective remedy for physical buildings and staffing limitations. Thank you so much. Have a good day.
Thank you, Liz.
Next caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Sarah, and I'd just like to note something. I just came through an epiphany, actually, and I'd like to share that. I think it might be instructive. But these problems, whether they're county and incarceration, have deep roots, not only in racism, but also in a shameful history that goes back to the late 60s when Ronald Reagan abandoned folks with mental health issues, and that led to huge numbers of folks with mental health issues becoming homeless and doubling the number of people with mental health issues being incarcerated and becoming homeless. I encourage you all to look it up and learn the details of that and hopefully learn lessons if you're not aware of it already. And I only know about this because both of my parents are mental health professionals. My mom was first a psych nurse and then became a licensed marriage family therapist, and my father, who sadly is no longer with us, was a licensed clinical social worker for over 40 years. So my whole life, I've been hearing from him, I had been hearing from him before he died, about how this started with Reagan, when he closed the mental health institutions, which wasn't necessarily a horrible thing, but he also didn't provide community health, day centers, and all kinds of other programs that were promised. And so it's really shocking to me, all these years later, to see the exact effects of this in play in my own county, and it's so clear to me what needs to be done. And it's like my dad is screaming out, hey, tell them about that! But so, I come with that perspective, and also, as someone who has a loved one who is incarcerated in not only the main jail, but also at RCCC, and I know, just from my own experience with this loved one, that the act, and also Dr. Corinne and many others have laid it out very clearly about, you know, better than I can, but I can just give a personal kind of perspective, is the act and process of being jailed, particularly in such a horrific place as the main jail, actually can cause mental illness and mental health issues. My loved one went into the main jail at RCCC as a sensitive person who had made a few mistakes and actually came out as someone with serious post-traumatic stress disorder, recurrent nightmares, and has still, even though it's been out like almost, I guess, six months now, has great difficulty even reintegrating into society, and it's very pronounced, this effect that jail had on my loved one. And many people think of incarceration as something that people can live through and get released from, but the reality is, time spent in jail can create this damage that haunts them even after release. And there's plenty of research that shows that incarceration can trigger and worsen symptoms of mental illness, and those effects can last long after someone leaves the jail. You can look, find the links to that research on the Prison Policy Initiative website. And I also want to mention that, well, someone did mention suicide watch and how important it is to have extra space for folks on suicide watch, but I wanted to mention that there would most likely be much less need for suicide watch if the conditions in the jail weren't so foul, demoralizing, and inhumane, or better yet, if folks were diverted from incarceration in the first place. I'd also like to link this to the fact that Sac County has shown it's willing to invest hundreds of millions in long-term locked facilities, jails, but not long-term affordable housing. And I just am baffled, because I was here listening and made a comment about the no camping initiatives that you all just approved. And how is that, if you're really serious about reducing jail population, how is that going to help? I mean, that's actually going to increase. You know, the criminalization of folks without homes...
Caller, I need you to conclude your comments. I didn't even remember if you're going to...
Okay, but, I mean, it's a no-brainer. Right now, 30% of people released from the jail are unhoused, meaning there are more than 10,000 releases per year, where housing could be needed at release. And I actually did jail support when I was visiting my loved one. There was a guy who was being released into the night. He was dirty, he had very little clothing on, no money, and he was sent out to the street. He was a homeless person and didn't have a place to live, and I don't even think he was wearing shoes. And I mean, I was thinking, you know, I tried to provide, I'm not saying I'm a great person. I tried to provide some help to him, but why on earth isn't there somebody to help this person who's just going to end up back in jail again? Like, please, invest in these programs that a mental health professional of 40 years, my father, said needed to be here, and they're not here. Please, it's your chance to fix this problem that started with Reagan. It's your chance to fix, not with a new jail. Thank you.
Thank you, caller, okay.
Thank you.
All right, next caller.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. Could you mute the meeting in the background and start with your comments?
Yes, I must be on delay. Okay, thank you, yes.
Okay, you have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, this is Lillian Glambin from On Track Program Resources, and I'm sorry, my viewing is a little delayed. Nikki was just, she was on fire, and on my screen, so I was a little caught off guard. So yeah, I was On Track Program Resources, and I want to thank Supervisor Kennedy in particular for supporting our effort with the Community Health and Justice Project, which is an effort right now to include the Black community and law enforcement and behavioral health and other allies in addressing the disparities that we referred to in Eric Jones's presentation and throughout. And I would invite everyone here in the chamber, and I just want to give a shout out to the Carcerate Sacramento, just, I mean, I second everything that has been said by everyone that has been at the podium. What can we do to bring those most affected into this space with humanity, with dignity, compassion? Most of the folks that we are talking about are very trauma-impacted people, human beings. I want to commend our mayor of Sacramento, who was so instrumental in Prop 63. And he has been transparent that it took having a dear loved one, right, to bring a human face, you know, to his efforts, you know, to inspire his efforts with mental health. I've been watching these proceedings since the beginning, and it has felt like we are talking about widgets and not human beings. It wasn't until the end, I think, it was one of the supervisors, I can't remember if it was Serna or not, introduced a little bit of humanity, that we're talking about. And for many of us, especially those who are in the chamber, there are loved ones. And that if you, if your loved ones were in this situation, I think it'd be a little different. And so I want to invite, I want to invite, again, Eric Jones, we haven't had a chance to reach out, but we'll be reaching out to you anyway, we're going to do it anyway, because we have some canned form and interviews and all that, but I want to invite this space, this room, everyone here, you know, to think about, how can we bring those most impacted into this conversation, not being talked about as if they're widgets? Because I can promise you, until that happens, you can sow as much money, you can build as many spaces, but until you take this as a... With empathy, with empathy, it's not going to go away. It's not going to go away. So please, I don't know who, again, Eric Jones, I'll start with you, but again, I invite you. Again, I know you're doing some separate efforts, but for us to come together, you know, to come together and to address this with the humanity it deserves and not widgets. So thank you so much for this time.
Thank you, Lillian.
Hey, next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Williams. I'm a resident of District 1, so I'm a constituent of Supervisor Serna. I'm also a member of the Law Office of Mark Maron and organizations that have studied deeply and acted strongly relating to homelessness. What we look to you for, Board of Supervisors, is leadership and vision. I'm asking, where is the comprehensive care plan? As it now stands, we have a unhoused population of up to 20,000 people. We have profound psychic distress, mental illness, and the remedy that the county, like the city, is advocating is arrest. Arrest them, and then take them into the jail where they will not receive treatment. The county has cut back on mental health services. I'm not sure that the 2008 cuts have ever been restored. We have waiting times, we have inadequate care facilities. It is irrational and extremely expensive and wasteful to approach the social issues, the dire poverty, and the results of that kind of poverty in our community without a comprehensive plan that is grounded in our neighborhoods. As an attorney, I see the abuses at the jail. Most recently, the county was liable for hundreds of thousands for the death of Antonio Thomas. Every day, we see mentally ill people being physically hurt and even dying, as he did, being killed. And a new building will not correct those problems because a jail cannot function as a hospital. A hospital is a place where the priority is to care for the person. In the jail, the whole paradigm is dominance, control, I'm sorry to say, brutality. The two don't go together, the two are not complementary. I urge you to work on a comprehensive care plan that deals with the needs of our people in our communities. I would point out that the people coming into jail are overwhelmingly nonviolent, 70%. And so we're proposing to spend $1 billion on another building. I follow Dr. Karen in saying, resist the temptation, do something different, care for us, plan for us, and fund what we need. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, everyone, my name is Catal Cornejo. Yeah, so, yeah, our discussion today is about the expansion of the main jail.
Caller, we can't hear you if you're still speaking. There you go, I can hear you now.
I mean, clearly, someone at some point thought that this was a good idea, or else we wouldn't be talking about it tonight. Yeah, so, I guess, I'm sure there's been a lot of wonderful people today talking about how the impacts of jailing are felt disproportionately by poor people, by Black and Brown people. Like, I haven't talked to a public forum in a long time. Yeah, I guess, it doesn't really matter what any of us really wants, right? It mostly matters what's good for the community, and is sending people to jail better for their community? And is expanding our current jail infrastructure better for our community? And in what ways? Yeah, we have so much data showing that, like, just the punitive coercive measures of the state that exist nowadays aren't improving our society. In fact, it might be making it worse. You might just be sending poor people to jail. That's not really going to make anything better in the long term. If I may, since I have your attention here, I hope I have your attention here.
You do.
Yeah, we, I mean, first off, like, the expansion, it just doesn't make sense from like a fiscal perspective, if, you know, our frequent talk of, you know, what if we had into a recession, doesn't make sense from a fiscal perspective. It doesn't make sense from a jobs perspective, because those jobs could very easily be turned into community-led programs, you know, hiring people that aren't just punishing others for a large amount of the time, just punishing them for being poor and/or unhoused. Yeah, you know, the health and wellness violations that exist in the current jail, you know, it's emblematic of like the rotten core of the system. I don't know, I don't really have anything more to add to the conversation other than just, what if we took $10 million and just did participatory budgeting? Isn't that an idea?
Okay.
What if we spent money asking people, and really just asking them, like, their opinion, not like just with an agenda or anything, just getting to know what people want, and then we do that and see how that goes?
Okay. Thank you, caller, for your comments and suggestions. Caller, you need to conclude if you could. No, you're into almost a half minute beyond the three. So if you could conclude your comments, please.
Yeah, I live in Sacramento, but I grew up in Dixon, always loved it, love the people there. Everybody's so nice. I'm trans, and so it's pretty nice to be in a city where people are still nice to you.
Okay. All right, caller, well, thank you for your call. We have some other callers online, so we appreciate you sharing your thoughts with us. Thank you. Okay, next caller.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yes, starting now.
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hello, my name is Hazel Watson, and I live in the Ardent area in Desmond district. And I am very concerned that last month, you, you spent a great deal of time passing ordinances that criminalized the homelessness and now this month you're talking about expanding, you're talking about building a new jail. So what it tells me is that your priorities are on incarcerating people, criminalizing people, and not on actually serving people. 70% of the county's budget is spent on, on incarcerating people, on, on, on chasing people down and locking people up. And I, I feel like this needs to be changed. I work in the nonprofit sector, and in the nonprofit sector, I was recently talking to somebody in government who had tried to give a grant to a nonprofit agency to come up with recommendations about how they could give out more money to nonprofit agencies. No nonprofit agency took that job because they would be barred from later grants. So being involved in making the recommendations would, would mean that they were not allowed to then apply for more money. So carrying this over, I'm assuming that these groups, these Natch and Lewis and these other groups who, uh, wrote these reports for you, well, then clearly, um, if you do vote to build these, these groups will be excluded from those bidding as they have already had an influence over what you're bidding, uh, what they would be bidding on, right? Because that would be only fair and transparent in this. Otherwise, we're creating a loop where someone for profit is advising you for profit, for their profit, to build something instead of spending money on services for people. I think community-based mental health treatment is a better bet for your money. Thank you. For our money, it's my money, my tax money. Thank you.
Thank you caller, thank you.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, members of the board. My name is Flojean Kofar, and I am a resident of Sacramento County as well as the Senior Director of State Policy for Public Health Advocates. And I want to start by just expecting a little bit of confusion. I'm both confused because I feel like we are kind of living Groundhog Day and having the same conversations over and over again without moving things forward. But I'm also confused about our priorities. Because if the priority of the county is to serve the people and keep us safe and healthy and happy, then we need to use the expansive literature that exists to guide us in what we do. And nowhere in this robust international literature is incarceration or its enhancement highlighted as a winning or effective strategy. I'm also reminded of a community meeting, I think it was in Fair Oaks, about seven or eight years ago, and someone in the audience asked the sheriff about mental health services. And without missing a beat, he said, well, we have those services in the jail, which was both shocking and quite disappointing. And so as I'm entering this conversation, I'm just wondering, are we trying to abide by the May's consent decree? Or are we trying to find a backdoor way to just expand the jail? Because the, there's a, a common saying that if your only tool is a hammer, every problem starts to look like a nail. And so I'd like to encourage us today to move beyond this play school, my first toolkit, and get a grown-up toolset with some diverse supplies. You know, this architecture firm that has been contracted should not be a thought leader on this project. Not only is there a clear and present conflict of interest, but beyond that, there's just a deficit in expertise. You should be looking to the people who are, again, focusing on the priority, which is keeping us safe and healthy and happy, and then finding strategies, not simply reinforcing what we already have in place that is failing and not making any of us safe or serving the needs of our communities. Furthermore, I'm really concerned that the tail is wagging the dog. Why are we not setting the priorities? Why are we letting our contractors tell us what's needed? The May's consent decree is incredibly clear that it does not require an expansion. In fact, a population reduction for the jail would do a great deal to meet the tenants of the decree, and it would be the fastest and most effective remedy. So I'm asking you today to please don't make us stay on this Groundhog Day over and over again cycle where we keep relitigating the same conversation, and actually take us off and let's talk about how we're going to spend the $6 billion budget we have. Yes, some of that are enterprise funds, but spend it in a way that makes sense, that serves our community, that meets the May's consent decree, and that also does things that are not counter to the goal of once again, serving the people and keeping us safe, healthy, and happy. Thank you.
Thank you Flojean, thank, thank you.
Next caller.
Flo, how many callers?
We're just stuck at 13, 14.
Oh, okay. It's okay, we'll, we'll take a break at some juncture and we'll make sure everybody gets heard, but, okay.
Please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, me? Oh, okay, okay. I'm a resident of Sac County, and I just heard about this new mega jail. That's what this meeting is about, right? I just want to say that America has the most imprisoned people in the world, not just by population, a quarter of all the imprisoned people in the world. There's four times more people in China, but more prisoners here. If anyone doesn't know what I'm talking about, it's just a Google away. And is that just because America has more criminals than other countries? Or is it because investment has always been more jails over housing? More funding for police than schools? If an imprisoned person, if an unhoused person is imprisoned, or if a person becomes unhoused due to their imprisonment, but there's no housing available for them when they're released, what are their chances of staying out of jail? Especially if the punishment for breaking minor rules of probation is more jail or prison time. Building this jail is betting against the people of Sacramento, investing in keeping them down and assuming they will stay down rather than helping them up. If 30% of people in jail are unhoused and 40% are in there for probation violations, that indicates systemic problems that more jails just won't fix. People of Sacramento need real investment like housing to succeed. More jails is not an investment in the people. America investing in jails and enforcement over housing and mental health is why more of our people are imprisoned than other countries. Building more jails instead of housing or other solutions is, is best a cynical bet against the people of Sacramento. Okay, thank you.
Thank you caller. Flo, we have a person returned that had signed up earlier, so I'm going to take the in, in-chamber comment. So, um, just beg patience for those on the phone. And Rafael, you had returned to the chamber, so I called on you early, so please come forward, so. Good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon. It's an honor to be here amongst you all. And I, I would like to say that I'm a resident of Sacramento County and also living in Citrus Heights. Uh, I, I've been in the jails as a detainee. I've been imprisoned as a prisoner. And I know exactly what is going on in the minds of those that are in jails and prisons, especially when they're coming out. It's called post-trauma, post-traumatic jail syndrome, post-traumatic prison syndrome. But even before I went in, I was suffering from mental illness. And so what Sacramento County can do to get ahead of the problem as a solution to the health and safety, not only of the city and, and, and the communities, but for the health and safety of the county? You know, how wisely we will spend our money? You know, it doesn't matter if you call this new building that's being proposed a mental health facility. It's still a detaining facility. That's where they detain people. And so when you detain them and you treat them in a certain way, as the treatment that I received in the Sacramento County jail, did not help me, it made it worse. I lost my job, I lost my way. Fortunately, there was community members that came to my aid. So I want to propose to you that if we wisely want to spend these millions of dollars that we have, that we're going to use to build another facility, we can get ahead of the problem by treating the problem. If we treat those who are mentally ill before they even get involved in the, in the criminal justice system, we will get ahead of it. So now anti-recidivism becomes a factor that creates a healthy Sacramento. Because now we reduce the populations in the jails and prisons, and we increase the asset portion of what healthy citizens can do for the city. And so we have the Exodus Project. Now, the only funding that they received was from the Public Defender's Office. It should have been also Sacramento County providing funding for what? For case management, for community intervention with those that are, for those that are mentally ill. And we know that a good portion of those that are mentally ill going into the jails are what, minorities? So let's show society, let's show California that we care about the minorities in such a way that we're going to fund for their health. We're going to provide for their health. Housing, mental health, uh, uh, services, jobs, opportunities, education. All of these things can be provided that will keep them from recidivating. You see what I'm saying? So I hope that we will take that into consideration. Also, Anti-Recidivism Coalition, they're here in Sacramento, and they need funding to provide housing and treatment, connecting them with the resources that will make them healthy again. So I think that there is a better way to spend the money instead of just building more, more detaining facilities. Thank you very much.
Thank you Rafael. Okay, we're approaching 5:30, so I think we'll go ahead and take a couple more callers, and then we'll alert folks that are on the phone. We'll continue to take calls. I'm going to call for a brief recess after we take two more callers, and then we'll, uh, continue and come back, take all the remaining commentators, and then bring it back to the board for discussion and direction. So with that Flo, let's take two more callers, and then we'll take a brief recess. Okay. And so, so those that are watching, we're going to take the next two callers in the queue, stay on, because we're not, we won't be adjourned in the meeting. We'll take a, a brief recess, and then we'll come back and continue to take the calls until we've completed all the, the comments. Uh, I, I imagine about 20 minutes, 20, 25 minutes, yeah. So if you all can have a break too, so, okay, very good.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, my name is Aiden. I'm a longtime resident of Sacramento County. And this conversation of jail expansion has been brought back to, by this board after the community gave it a resounding no in March 2021. The community told you the solutions back then to fix the problem of overpopulated jails, and yet we have still seen, have yet to see work for mental crisis centers in communities, or increased affordable and accessible housing in communities. Mental health will not improve in jail, and we are hurting so many people who are currently incarcerated for these mental health problems that could be in real mental health hospitals. Further pursuing this project would not only be a waste of resources, but cruel to the people impacted. If we are truly intent on reducing prison population, I have to ask, as I wrap up my comment, why hasn't the county, why has the county stopped allowing people with severe mental health needs to be transferred from the jail to the county's mental health treatment center? And why is incarceration used as a tool by probation for minor rule violations, which account for 40% of jail bookings? Thank you.
Thank you Aiden, appreciate your comments. Okay, next caller.
Next caller. Please start with your comments, caller. You have three minutes.
Hi county supervisors, um, you know, I really think that the culture of this county has such a hard time of just accepting the word no from the supervisors. What part of no don't you understand? And honestly, for such data-driven experts that you claim in law enforcement, other county departments, you all have a really hard time of showing all this progress that's being made in the jails you keep talking about. If so much progress has been made, why aren't you showing the numbers that would allow us to measure that progress objectively? If you're so proud of the work you're doing, why do you hide it? I don't believe this is about the jail expansion plan, but how decisions are being made in county government. And once again, the public is routinely gaslit, lied to by the county, like, by county staff, and the county is breaking its promises made on March 10th by talking about this as not a jail expansion, adding beds, like, as if it's not a jail expansion. It's ridiculous at this point. So I really want to name that we can't trust the very architect that would stand up profit from this project, like, to do a study to determine if a new jail building was necessary. It's, it's flagrantly stupid, frankly, and it's a blatant conflict of interest. Somebody's bribed in that instance, but I, you know, we'll never, like, who knows when we'll figure that one out. But the lawyers representing the class action May's lawsuit state, like, have stated multiple times in letters that while mediation of physical plant deficiencies is essential, the May's consent decree does not require the county to build additional jail beds or engage in any particular form of construction. It requires the county to meet minimum conditions for the people it chooses to incarcerate. And as has been wisely noted by the chair and up, like, and the other supervisors on this board, this is about how staff treats it. It's not a structural problem. It is a cultural problem within a sheriff's department that is routinely run by a white supremacist culture and has no respect for the community members it claims to serve. And while we're on the topic of, of the sheriff, let's talk about how much funding this county board has approved for, like, in just the last year. The sheriff's fiscal year budget for this year exceeded $650 million, an all-time high. But imagine this money, like, what we could, the jobs we could fund that could actually provide meaningful mental health care services and substance use treatments and help people that you want to get out of the jail system if you just diverted even a fraction of that funding. For example, if you decrease the sheriff's funding by just 2% or $13 million, you could support, like, you could actually support 333 behavioral health peer specialists, 267, or 267 mental health workers, or 200 social workers, or 200 health educators, or 333 EMTs, or 267 paramedics, or any equivalent combination. The average sheriff deputy, just like, just from the ones that I could find, makes no less than $101,000. So if you were to cut just two sheriff deputies or $202,000 in salaries, you could actually support five behavioral health peer specialists, or four mental health workers, or three social workers, or three health educators, or five EMTs, or four paramedics, or an equivalent combination.
Okay, Keon, I need you to conclude, please.
This is fucking math. Yes, I will conclude, I will conclude.
Okay.
We actually need real solutions and genuine creativity. And frankly, the county staff, the fact that they contend, you come back with this proposed jail expansion, try to make arguments for what, like, for adding to the carceral system, is just ridiculous. You have the resources to provide, like, to provide real services for the people of the jail, and you need to divert that funding. But until you break through this punitive culture that prioritizes punishment over care, you're not going to get there.
Okay. Thank you Keon, appreciate it. All right, with that then, we're going to, um, we're going to call for a 25-minute break. We'll come back in session at 6 o'clock. We'll pick up with the phone callers that are on the line. So apologies to those that have been on hold, but we will, uh, come back and, and hear out all the remaining callers. So, uh, okay, we'll, we will stand in recess until 6 o'clock. Thanks. All right, good evening. I want to call back in the session, the Jan, uh, January, September 14th meeting of the Sacramento County Supervisors 2022. And I ask that Flo, please call a roll to reestablish quorum.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy, Desmond Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you, okay. We're going to resume our public comment, uh, period. And I know we've had some folks that have been very patient. Thanks to those that have been on hold. And we, I understand we have about 10 or 11 folks in the queue currently, and, uh, we're going to do our best to get through those, and, um, we'll, um, see how the rest of the evening goes here, and then bring it back to the board. All right, with that then, let's go to our first caller.
Please transfer the caller. Please transfer the caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Moyes, and I am calling in, speaking on behalf of Sunrise Movement Sacramento, a movement of young people fighting for climate justice in a livable world. We are calling in in opposition to this jail expansion. I heard someone commenting earlier about concerns for downtown. So just to demonstrate a fraction of the nexus of the safety of our local urban environment, such as downtown, I'd ask what the county is doing to preserve breathable air quality and safe environmental conditions in cases like wildfires, such as we're currently experiencing right now. The very same fires and conditions that people in jail in California are called to work to fight and manage with unjust and substandard pay. And why is it that the county's primary interaction with unhoused people, who are most exposed along with outdoor farm workers, with no release from conditions like toxic air with PM 2.5, or the recent record oppressive heat wave? Why is it that the primary interaction is through a system of incarcerating them? We are in full support of everything that Decarcerate Sacramento has said so far, both verbally and in submitted written comments. I will defer to their caring expertise for our community, the people who live here, and most importantly, to the people impacted by these systems and decisions. With that, I'll just use the rest of my time to speak as an individual constituent. As a lifelong resident of District 3, I am calling in opposition to the proposed jail expansion project. The Board of Supervisors has rightfully canceled this project before. Unfortunately, I and so many people I know are not able to attend in person today, had to leave before they could speak, or couldn't dedicate as much time if we might care to, to continually wait and listen. Let's look at it. One hour and 53 minutes on hold for this. But before the break, I was able to hear Supervisor Natoli raising some good questions, referring to a monitoring report and the state of some of the conditions, critical qualitative data on how these policies translate to shaping the lived experience of people in our community and those taken out of and locked away from it. It's clear from what you've already heard today that this project will not improve any outcomes for public health, safety, or wellness, and is not a cost-effective solution to any of the problems our community faces. Rather, it would not comply with the Mays consent decree, and it would be a waste of our tax dollars in a direction that takes us even further away from the outcomes required while exposing Sacramento to more financial risk. Why is it that the same architecture firm that would profit from this project, the one that you chose to do a study to determine if any jail building was needed? As a taxpayer in Sacramento County, that sounds like a huge conflict of interest and gives me even greater concern about this matter. I ask that as my elected representative, Supervisor Desmond, join in the board's previous decision to cancel this proposed project. Thank you.
Thank you, Moye. Appreciate your comments. Thank you for reading that into the record. Okay.
Next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
The county staff is sitting here and telling you they need space for another 1,000 people because they need to reduce jail population. Jail population pre-pandemic was around 3,500. Now it's 3,500. What reduction has occurred? What part of reduce means transfer? What part of reduce means keep them incarcerated? We need actual reduction of folks who don't need to be in there. The Knockin' Lewis Study did not explore how the jail could be retrofitted if the population was reduced. Their endpoint was known when they were researching, and they had a motivation to reach that endpoint, a new jail that is beyond ridiculous. What, was it so difficult to find a firm that didn't have a motivation which would benefit themselves? You only need so many jail beds because you insist on keeping people in jail whose only crime is not being able to afford bail. You trust those with the resources to get out, to come back, but the remaining you leave incarcerated, sometimes for far beyond any sentence they would have received, because they are too poor. You're literally jailing the poor. Unconvicted, just poor. As others have stated, the lawyers representing the class action Mays lawsuit stated in the letter to the board that Mays consent decree does not require the county to build additional jail beds or engage in any particular form of construction. It requires the county to meet minimum conditions for the people it chooses to incarcerate. Chooses. The county is free to determine the manner in which to comply with those legal obligations. The court-appointed neutral experts in class counsel have repeatedly called for jail population reduction, not transfer, reduction, including in reports and letters regarding unacceptable conditions of confinement. According to the O'Connell Report, 40% of people entering the jail there for arrest related to breaking probation rules, not laws, instead of committing new crimes. We need to ask, why is incarceration being used as a tool for minor probation violations? The county could ask the probation department to just stop this practice. County executive staff claimed that in each report, the experts and counsel have found that one of the primary obstacles to compliance is the physical limitations of the main jail. This is extremely misleading because the county has agreed that jail population reduction would be the fastest, most effective remedy for physical building and staffing limitations. Building a new jail will not address staffing shortages, it will exacerbate them. If you invested adequately in mental health, a number of these issues would be addressed. That being said, this is a problem of your own creation. People are not inherently criminal. No one is born a criminal. Factors are involved in pushing someone towards criminality. To a desperate person whose options are to commit a crime or die, you are making their decision for them by not providing them those vital services they need prior to ever committing a crime. You choose not to invest in those services, so rather than help on the front end, you harm them on the back end. Every time you don't provide an option to a person in those desperate circumstances, you only give them that one path to survive: crime. We have ways to prevent crime. We have ways to minimize the jail population. We have ways to address staffing. We have ways to address privacy concerns. We have ways to reduce recidivism. None of these requires a new building. All of them require outside-of-the-box thinking, and once again, I am seeing the county veer back into the well-trod rut of incarceration. That isn't the solution here. It is far more productive to address the issues that can be immediately addressed, but here we are again without significant process and another request for a new facility. How about you just invest in mental health services, period? That gets us so far. Diversion gets us further. We don't need new building associated with incarceration. We need services. Thank you.
Thank you, caller. Okay, next caller.
Next caller. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Great, thank you. Hello, this is Megan White. I'm a resident of District 1, Phil Serna's district, and I have some serious concerns about this jail expansion. There is a big consent issue here. As a community, we already invested a lot of time into communicating that this is not something that we want our communal funds invested in. And so the fact that we have to come back when we've already gave you, our elected officials, the message again, is really frustrating. Sacramento already incarcerates our community at a rate of 42.5% higher than other California communities. The more people we lock up, the more we strengthen the cycle of crime and poverty, not just for the person arrested, but for their whole family. Recidivism rates are out of control, and we don't have enough preventative programs as it is. This money could be used to prevent crime instead of increasing incarceration rates. The fact that a company that has a vested financial interest was running the study about whether or not they should get paid is not only bad business, it's unethical. I'd also like to uplift what Natoli said about this jail meaning community-based services will likely get cut in the future to keep this permanent jail running. Before we look at expanding imprisonment, let's look at investing in preventing imprisonment. It's less expensive and better for everyone, except the industrial prison complex, including the contractors that conducted the study on this new jail. I urge you to stop wasting time and money on jail expanding and reinvest your effort into community building. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. Next call.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Sheriff Natoli, members of the board and staff. This is James Allison, calling on behalf of the Midtown Association. Thank you for allowing me to speak on this item today. The Midtown Association is a property-based improvement district that represents over 1,200 properties in the central city. Our mission is to make Midtown the center for culture, creativity, and vibrancy in Sacramento's urban core. While the main county jail is located in the central business district, there is a fundamental link to the broader area within our central city, including our residents and our businesses. Based on the report before you this afternoon and the conversation you have had, it is without question that the existing approach and operation is unsustainable. It is imperative to invest in the increasing services and improving facilities. Both are determining factors in reducing criminal recidivism and ensuring that those who are incarcerated are provided the best resources they need to have the best outcomes possible following release. Further, we cannot, as a county, allow this necessary reduction in 44% of our capacity at the main jail to occur without consideration for accountability measures to be put into place to support the safety of our community. We simply request the county thoughtfully addresses these release times, services provided to individuals after release, community reunification programs, and new and enhanced facilities to provide meaningful care to those with acute and subacute mental health conditions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item today.
Thank you, James. Okay.
Next caller.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Marshall Arnewine, and I work for the ACLU of Northern California and Sacramento as our legal policy advocate. I'm calling to support the Decarcerate Sacramento community and their urgency of objecting to jail expansions. The money used for jails can be instead used to be reinvested into community needs for mental health care, housing, drug treatment, health employment, and reparations. The ACLU works dramatically to reduce incarceration by ending unjust and oppressive laws, policies, and practices that target and disproportionately harm Black, Brown, and other marginalized communities. We advocate for transforming the criminal legal system into one that keeps communities safe and respects the dignity and rights of all who comes in contact with it. The ACLU supports the Decarcerate Sacramento list of questions the community has brought before you today, and we urge you to review them carefully before bringing back any proposal for a new jail building. A couple of questions I want to highlight are: What are the projected building costs for a new jail tower? What would be the ongoing costs to the county that are associated with the new tower? These questions are important because the human and financial costs of mass incarceration are staggering, and this burden often falls disproportionately on poor and marginalized communities. What is also important is that the Mays consent decree does not require the county to build additional jail beds or engage in any particular form of construction. Therefore, the ACLU urges this board to seriously listen to the community and reject any jail expansion. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Marshall.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
All right. Hi, my name is JL from Decarcerate Sacramento, and I'm calling in because of all of my community members who took time out of their busy schedules to make public comment. Your messages were so uplifting, and hearing how emotional Liz got speaking on our friends on the inside. I wish that some of you would get as emotional with thinking about the seriousness of what's going on in the jail. So many deaths in this jail. And let me guess, this would have happened if we had a new one, right? So upsetting to have to go through this for the third time around. We do not need a new jail. What we need is for the sheriffs in the county to understand how to meet standards for the current jail. Because at this point, in my eyes, all building a new jail, especially with the same folks running it, is just putting perfume on a pile of hot garbage. Sounds like this new jail will only help those who will gain from this build. And you know who it will not gain, who will not gain from this? The people on the inside and my taxpaying dollars. Let's do something that actually will work. Let's get the jail reduced for real this time. Let's really commit to helping people who suffer from mental illness by not taking them to the jail to begin with. Let's put these millions towards community-based systems that will actually help people and not trigger them. Let's actually, let's, I'm sorry, let's use actual doctors such as Dr. Corinne, reports on why this is a good or bad idea instead of hearing from people who have a vested interest in building a new jail instead of fixing the current one and adhering to the consent decree. Thank you.
Thanks, Jill.
Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Yeah, hi, thank you. I'm calling today as a physician who's cared for patients inside of the Sacramento County Jail. Honestly, I wasn't going to call in today, because I'm tired, and this conversation feels like it's been the same conversation for the last three years. But then I walked by the county jail today and viscerally responded and had just recounted my experience of very limited time inside of that space. I've been through, like, COVID now, and the Sacramento County Jail is always saying that it's actually given me a nightmare. And so instead of kind of rewriting a new thing to talk to you all about, I'm going to read, like, what I wrote in a journal after my weeks at the Sacramento County Jail, back from my time there in 2019, so three years ago. So how can a place like this exist in our world? How can such inhumane and dehumanizing structures exist? People are trapped in boxes, half have a window, half have a TV. They're only allowed to leave for three showers a week, if that, and maybe some time in the day room, which is just a bigger concrete box. How can people heal? How can anyone get better here? How can you even pretend to listen with a deputy just looking over your shoulder the whole entire time? How can we do better? The system seems insurmountable. Does it even matter if I care? How do you incite change, highlight injustice? And how can people just go on living their lives like this has been happening down the street? That's what brought me here to talk about why I think jails are inhumane. It was like, it was the Sacramento County Jail that led me to call you all and to have these conversations and to exist with the people who are working to change the way it is. Because a building is not going to change the unethical and the inhumane treatment that occurs inside this jail. Like, we need to invest in our community. You have the power to make this decision. Please do that. Thanks.
Thank you, caller. Thanks for sharing from your journal as well. Okay, next caller.
Please, oh, next caller, please. Hi caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Good evening, this is Steve Sander. I'm a resident of District 2. I think reasonable people are left scratching their heads, wondering why members of the board are once again entertaining these non-starters when they're low-hanging fruit that have a demonstrated track record of tangible benefits, like providing people with actual housing, not carceral warehousing, for instance. And I have addressed this board previously about the need to fund 24/7 community-based mental health response, like MH1, not law enforcement. Studies show that increased spending on law enforcement, on the other hand, does not correlate with improved public safety. We need to start seeing this as a public health issue, as a societal issue. Instead of wasting money on jails or on overpolicing, we need community-led solutions that don't involve law enforcement. The entire reason the consent decree is in place is because of the oversized jail population, which the county has failed to manage in a humane or lawful manner. Expanding jail spending now won't fix the issues. There's only a chance that it'll exacerbate existing issues, which are already prevalent and widespread throughout the jail. Let's not pretend things will be completely different if this proposal somehow gets adopted. And at the heart of the matter is the fact that the sheriff's department is a tool whose primary function, whether you like to admit it or not, is to protect concentrated capital, which usually manifests itself by getting oppressed people caught up in the prison industrial complex. This prison industrial complex is not the venue to be addressing the mental health issues caused by living in our profoundly sick capitalist system. issues caused by living in our profoundly sick capitalist system where things like homelessness are normalized. It's no measure of mental health to be well-adjusted to a profoundly sick society. Thanks, and have a wonderful evening.
Thank you, Steve, for your comments. Just pause just for a moment. I know we have a couple callers still in the queue, so I'm going to go to 6:30, and then we'll close the queue at 6:30. So if there are folks that have been watching that would like to call in, now's the time, because otherwise we'll close the queue and take the remaining callers. With that, we'll go to our next caller.
Next caller, please. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Jails and prisons are fundamentally not therapeutic environments, and they are woefully ill-equipped to provide these services. When you're in the prison system, the expectations are very clear. You're given a set of rules, you're meant to follow those rules. If you don't follow the rules, there's consequences, and the consequences revolve in greater punishment, greater control. When a person with mental illness enters into that system, there's a misalignment between the straightforward system and their ability to comply with that system. So if someone is not thinking clearly, if they're feeling extremely paranoid, they're not going to follow the rules that are being told to them or the people who are enforcing those rules. When mentally ill people are not able to comply with the instructions and expectations that are laid out for them in jail, the result is greater and greater punishment. So one of the things that we see frequently is that punishments escalate, and the end of the line is punishment in solitary confinement. So if people want to follow the rules in prison enough time, they can be sent to solitary confinement, which is a disastrous outcome for people with mental illness. About three in five people with a history of mental conditions do not receive treatment while incarcerated. They're also more likely to face discipline and spend three times longer in solitary confinement. The trauma of incarceration compounded by a lack of adequate treatment and reentry resource that creates a revolving door in which people with mental health conditions are unable to stabilize their lives. This is a bad policy. Mental health services accessed outside of jails and prisons are not only more effective, but also more cost-efficient than incarceration. The failure to invest in treatment comes instead at a direct cost to people's ability to live their lives. Yet officials like you continue to pour more money into jail and prison systems totally unable to address underlying mental health needs. People with mental health needs are not a threat to public safety at all. In fact, they're more likely to be the victim of a crime than a perpetrator. Jailing people who need treatment is both unjust and destabilizing. Objecting to the trauma of incarceration without adequate services, this is the true risk to public safety. What legislators need to understand is that the funds are there, but they're not being used effectively. Funds going toward housing people with serious mental illness in our jails and prisons, not towards treatment. The costs continue adding up with inadequate or absent treatment. Without proper treatment, illnesses can worsen and behavior can deteriorate. Therefore, time off for good behavior is unlikely to happen and may end up staying in prison longer, which costs more money. On discharge, not having been treated adequately, their behavior is most likely still problematic, making recidivism likely. These human tolls are difficult to monetize, but they are nonetheless considerable. The cost can be estimated. On average, in 2018, the cost of holding people in federal custody was $102 per day per adult, or $37,000 a year. The monetary cost for juvenile detention is staggering, $588 days per youth or $214,000 per year. The average cost for psychiatric treatment in a community hospital ranges from $3,600 to $8,500 per year, depending on the type of illness being treated. A simple calculation reveals that for an adult, the cost of 35 to 83 days in prison would provide the financing of a hospitalization that would have a better chance of bringing about recovery. For a juvenile, a sentence of just six to 15 days would cover the cost of psychiatric hospitalization.
Ma'am, I need you to conclude your comments, if you can, please.
I'm almost done. It is clear that an inordinate amount of money is being spent on mental illness, but spent in an inordinately wasteful manner. In addition to the untouchable human cost incurred by incarceration, harmful effects on mental health, there is the easily estimated great fiscal cost that could be spent on treatment that actually helps people with serious mental illness. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Okay.
Next caller, and this is the last caller.
Okay, very good. All right. So we'll close the queue. Last caller.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hi, I'm calling in today to oppose any jail being built in Sacramento. The number of people who live here in America and then are jailed and imprisoned currently is over 2 million. That is much higher than any other country, any other place in the world by far. And it has continued to stack since slavery, since the Thirteenth Amendment, where slavery was allowed, given a criminal punishment. Our populations have been rising in jails. Right now, only one quarter of incarcerated Americans have even been convicted, have not even been convicted of a crime. So building a jail does not seem reasonable in the slightest. Why are we looking to create another jail rather than look at the surplus of people we have already locked up and away from their community? Also, the number of Americans incarcerated or imprisoned in the United States is more than military personnel, is more than the number of hairdressers, of bartenders, bus drivers, all of those professions combined. There are more people imprisoned. Do we really want to create even more systems where we are locking people up rather than trying to encourage community building and trying to encourage people to be creative? Our systems are punishing. We don't need a new jail. We need to reconsider how we are treating people because this is inhumane, and it's extreme, even here in Sacramento, in a very, what people might call a liberal city and a liberal state. No, we have these problems right here. And most people have not been convicted, and they're just held in pre-trial detention without a trial, often getting no trial at all, just being extorted into a plea bargain. They, it's just, we can't have a new jail here in Sacramento. It's, I don't know why we have to keep coming back to this. It seems like y'all are bombarding us, the community, even though we're telling you all these things you're doing is cruel and authoritative. Like, you just want to keep looking at this vision you have of the community that isn't accurate.
You need to conclude your comments, if you could, ma'am, please.
I'm done. Get a different perspective.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for concluding comments. Okay. We did have one other person in the queue that was still in the queue, so this will be our last caller. Go ahead.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Mia Dawson. I'm a resident of Sacramento County and a PhD candidate at UC Davis, and I focus on race, housing, and policing in the United States through the lens of human geography. So as an educator at UC Davis, my students are a diverse group, mostly from the state of California. Many of them have been either directly or indirectly impacted by incarceration. My goal as an educator is to increase civic engagement and political education. So I brought this topic to my students' attention months ago and again now. When this exact issue was being discussed months ago, my students were paying attention with bated breath. Many whose relatives had been incarcerated were bracing themselves from what would have been traumatizing news, knowing that the carceral system was being drastically expanded in their home county or right next door. Knowing how they and their relatives or others in their communities were impacted by being caged, many of them were shocked and rightfully skeptical of even the basic idea of a mental health jail. They were encouraged and relieved to see the will of the community being served. And while it is disappointing to see the same issue here again, I can only hope that the young people I work with in our larger community do not have to have their spirits crushed and demoralized by terrible news. I would like to put my full weight against the expansion of the jail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mia. Okay, that concludes our callers and, is that correct? Okay, and our testimony. And I want to thank all those who've addressed the board today, those that were waiting patiently on the phone lines, and certainly those that were in chambers and awaited their turn to speak. So again, thank you very much for those comments. I'm going to bring it back to the board now, then. This was a workshop, and I don't know if Anne or Eric, you want anything to kind of set the tone. We'll hear from board members, any direction. Obviously, you're going to be coming back with something, but you may want to get some further indication from board members if that's what you were looking for. So, yeah. Eric?
Yes, thank you, Chair. So again, this item is informational, designed to do a summary of the expert reports that we discussed, gain more public input, as we've heard. And then staff will be working on a couple plans, which is, again, facility-related, as well as alternatives to incarceration, and will be coming back before you before the end of the year for direction.
Okay. For an action item, I trust.
Correct.
So for folks to know, it will be an action. Okay, thank you for that, then. So I'll go to Supervisor Serna, then Supervisor Kennedy.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. If Rick could come down to the microphone, I have some questions for him. Thanks, Rick. So I want to bring up a couple items that occurred to me, seemed to be a theme in some of the comments tonight and certainly last year, one of which is the consent decree does not state county go forth and build an annex for mental health. So can you try to summarize what the thinking is in terms of the conclusion that our county council's office has made, along with our executive team, that that particular capital project will or should satisfy that part of the consent decree that is really focused on the conditions relative to mental health in the jail?
So, thank you, Mr. Serna. I want to go back to what the point of tonight was, which was to bring forth the experts that we had retained to address two fundamental questions. One, how many people could be held in the jail across the street and be in compliance with the consent decree? And two, how many people could we reasonably expect to divert from the system? And the reason we did that is because every monitoring report we've received from the subject matter experts, to include class counsel, has come back to the inadequate facilities. So if we are going to have inadequate facilities, we've got to ask ourselves, how can we get to adequacy? And so we needed to answer those two questions. And now, of course, you have those reports, you've heard the conclusions of the experts. We will be coming back with more reports from Norton Lewis, who I want to say, whatever happens, will not be eligible to participate in any future construction, design, or build. Because of their work here, will be excluded from that. But they will be coming back with options to address those facility inadequacies. And as Mr. Jones has indicated, part of this solution absolutely has to be diversion. And we will be taking Mr. O'Connell's report, taking it apart, and coming to you with plans to address that. I don't know what the conclusions are going to be from Norton Lewis, but, and so I can't answer your question completely, but that is the thinking that brought us here tonight.
Okay.
Can I interject?
Please.
Or add? To go back to your specific question, I think. And I think you asked about facilities to address mental health, expanded facilities. That's just one part of the issue, and I think Rick can probably add on to this. There's other deficiencies in the physical plant of the jail, including being able to be compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act regarding, in the booking loop, I know is a big issue, and other physical changes that need to be made to the existing and any future jail to address deficiencies that have been pointed out in the consent decree, in all of the monitoring reports, and in all of the studies done by the county's experts. So I don't know if that answers your question any better, but it does, it's a whole systematic approach that needs to be looked at in conjunction with jail reduction diversion programs. And that is, I think, another point to take out of this evening's workshop.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to get at here is that there's a, it troubles me that there's an impression by many speakers today and in earlier workshops and hearings on the subject that have concluded, or at least as evidenced by their testimony, have concluded that we are looking or focusing on the prospect of, their words not mine, expanding the jail when the consent decree does not say that specifically. So at some point, I guess what I was trying to ask Rick, perhaps not as clearly as I could, is that because they didn't say that specifically, there at least has been some consideration thus far, and when you come back, it may have a lot more detail to it, that the only way, or the very limited number of options that we could have, must include some type of capital investment and additional space for very particular needs, which does reflect or does respond to the monitoring reports about not just the number of folks in the jail, but the condition in the jail and the ability to provide constitutional services in the jail. So I guess I am asking the question really for the benefit of those that think that somehow we all woke up the next day after the consent decree and determined that we need to go spend millions of dollars on a new building, but that doesn't, you know, I want to make sure that that is not the case. I know it not to be, but I think there needs to be some explanation. I think this is the right time and right venue, maybe, to elaborate a little bit from staff's perspective.
So that's absolutely right. It's not, when we commissioned these reports, we realized that what didn't happen in March of 2021 and probably before that as well is, we didn't, as a county, as a staff, explain why a facility was necessary. So when we, after that, and we're still left with inadequate facilities, we said to ourselves, is our, we have to question our perceptions of this, and let's ask ourselves, could we get to compliance in that building? And that's why we commissioned Norton Lewis, who, again, I will say, their fee is the same whether they said, yes, you can do these changes and you get to compliance, or no. It's the same. They do not have a vested interest in that answer. And so if that answer had come back, yes, you could, then we would probably be having that conversation. But of course, it didn't. It came back with the numbers it came back with, and then there's disparity between their numbers and Kevin O'Connell's numbers, which is really the, how to address that gap is the question. And I would just add, the 600 that we've talked about, that's not going to be all the county's choice. It's not like the county gets to pick 600 people and decide to let them out, or to not even bring them in. We're going to need partnerships with all 25 of those agencies that bring individuals to the jail, and the courts, who of course are going to have a tremendous amount of say about whether somebody gets released, or their sentence reduced, or they have some alternative to incarceration. So it's going to take a lot of work, not just by the county, but by the system as a whole, to get to those numbers.
No, I appreciate the response. The other issue, Mr. Chair, if you, the board will indulge me here. Again, kind of a theme that I've heard from a number of speakers, including some folks that wrote emails to the board, to the clerk during the course of the testimony. some folks that wrote emails to the board, to the clerk during the course of the testimony. They had a kind of a common interest or expectation that if we, the board, are looking at spending millions of taxpayer dollars on an additional, you know, facility or augmentation to the main jail for very specific purposes, why aren't we, and why, you know, why couldn't we also look at those same, that same investment amount in things like housing and, you know, acute, subacute services outside of the jail system? I'm not saying that, I've concluded that for me, that that's necessarily possible, but I do think the public deserves to understand why that may not be an alternative now, or it could be an alternative that comes back in the form of a more detailed plan, but it's something that I heard from a number of parties tonight in the past. So maybe, I don't know if Rick's the right person, perhaps Mr. Jones is, but is that something that could come back as a component part of the plan to meet the consent decree?
Yes Supervisor, that is, the exact plan is to not just look at the facility side of it, but also a detailed plan on the various continued need for alternatives to incarceration, additional deflection, additional diversion. Those will be coupled together, because we recognize this isn't just about the facility. There's still a lot of work that we feel we can do to reduce population in other ways. And then I'll also just add, I just want to make sure I'm correct here, that every single subject matter expert report did point to the inadequacies of the current facility structure.
Right, okay. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Okay, Patrick.
Thank you. And on that note, you don't have to be a subject matter expert, you just need to take a tour of the place, quite frankly. Couple of things. One is, thank you for clarifying the Nocton Lewis issue as far as conflict of interest, that's helpful. A bit of a nuance, Supervisor Serna, kind of related to one of your comments, was, you know, as the only person left at this county of Sacramento standing, who was in the mediation for the consent decree, there was a lot of conversation that went on during, a lot of conversation went on around the table with the judge and the litigants attorneys, the class attorneys, about how prescriptive the consent decree was going to be. And at the end of the day, it landed on not terribly prescriptive, more of a, this is, these are the deficiencies, these are where you need to get, but a lot less on how you get there. And that was decided by both parties, because they acknowledged that, you know, we can access subject matter experts that can maybe come up with something different than what they would, but it'll still get us the same place, and we didn't want them being prescriptive because we thought there might be other alternatives. So it was specifically, very consciously decided that, you know, we would not have it as a prescriptive document. So when you hear it doesn't say anything about more facilities, or enhanced facilities, or anything, it doesn't say anything about a lot of the things we're talking about specifically. So that's kind of where we got, how we got to that particular, it wasn't by accident. Finally, you know, a couple of things. One is, I would like to look at more jail diversion programs, I know we all do. I sent the appropriate staff, including Ann, a reminder of my fondness for this particular model in Bejar County, in San Antonio. I still want to look at something like that, and, you know, heard great things about it when we were in San Antonio. And I'm not saying it's the end-all be-all, but it's someplace to start for, specifically for mental health diversions. Also, I brought it up earlier, and I've had conversations with Siobhan about it, I do think that we need to take another look again at our mental health treatment center and whether or not we allow drop-offs there, which would also, you know, law enforcement drop-offs, which would also, we did, when we retooled our mental health delivery system, we did do a law enforcement hotline type of thing, so that they could triage from the field. How much that's being used, I don't know, but as follow-up, I would be curious to know how much that is being used. But I don't think that's quite far enough, and I would like to look again at a law enforcement drop-off potential. And then finally, on the facility itself, I'll just speak for myself. You know, I did say that I didn't think we had accomplished enough from a procedural basis to head into capital improvements at that time. I never said, and I've been very consistent, even with some of my friends in the audience, I've been very consistent, that I do think that that is an archaic facility that needs improvements. I remember when I first elected, one of the first things I did was I asked, I think it was the undersheriff at the time, but I, you know, when I had a tour, and I said, you know, this place was obsolete the day it opened, wasn't it? And the answer was clearly yes. And so, you know, and the funny thing is, is that we get criticized for wanting to spend money to improve a facility, but that we also get criticized for the condition of the facility. And, you know, I just don't see how those two things reconcile. So I'm not saying, you know, build a second tower, I'm not saying anything, actually. I'm going to let the experts come up with something, and the board will have an opportunity to deliberate whatever comes forward. But to say that there are not needs for capital improvements on that facility, specifically for mental health, for HIPAA, for ADA, is just wrong. But that does not preclude us from doing everything we can to lower the jail population and keep people from being in there in the first place. So that's my position on this. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Any other member in the queue? I don't see other supervisors. So again, I would just offer a couple of comments at the end of a long hearing, a workshop, that, and I think I explored some of these earlier, and appreciate certainly the level of effort that's gone into providing the board and certainly the community with a good basis for having this important discussion and conversation, but also for some decisions that we're going to weigh in on here in a fairly short amount of time. I guess one of the things that still lingers in my mind is, and my colleagues and their comments touched on components of it, is that recognizing the assessment that was done relative to population, to the special populations that are called out for in the, which are about 600 of the current census of the jail, or at least when the report was prepared earlier in the spring. And I think the discussion we've had here for a good part of the day relative to what we might do both inside the walls, but also outside, and I guess one of the questions that still lingers with me, though, is that, and it goes to the investment that's going to have to be made in that facility, if we never added one square inch to any of the floor space, or at least the footprint. And it wasn't clear, the conclusion was pointed out in the actual cover staff report that was forwarded with the Nocton Lewis and the rest of the reports, but that recognizing there's this gap between the 1,000 population reduction versus the 600 that Lisa's seen to be potentially achievable, but what would need to be done? Again, even if you got closer to that number, I guess, and it kind of went to my questions earlier this afternoon about the Three West, and, you know, doing things that would modify, because, and I think Lisa touched on it in her comments a moment ago, too, is that the ADA and HIPAA, you know, requirements are going to be there, whether you've got, you know, one person remaining in that jail, or, you know, the current population, or somewhere in between. And so I guess what I would hope that we could have, again, not to spend a lot more money, but to certainly get some, an idea when this next comes before our board, as to, if you were to narrow that gap through other efforts in the community, that, you know, what is still the projected number for things that have to be done? Because I know you're going to do that assessment with adding square footage for medical or behavioral health, I trust that's going to be part of the calculation here. I, for one, would like to know, though, if you were able to achieve, and you can presume it or assume it, 1,000, you know, inmate reduction, what would be the investment that still be required? Whether it's the booking loop, whether it's in, you know, ADA compliance, whether it's in, you know, certain segregation areas for health and privacy? I would, again, at least to have a good ballpark number to know what that would be. I think it's an important number. Lastly, I would just say, and I shared this concern in a conversation with county executive just this morning, because it sticks with me, and I think it was alluded to in one of the comments made by one of the callers, is that, you know, irrespective of what we do to improve the conditions there, whatever investments are made, we've already made significant investment in, certainly in personnel, and in the work that, you know, brings us to this evening's conversation, you know, what's contemplated, again, with or without any proposed expansion of the footprint, but is that, you know, if the commitment is made to do that, that when times, when budget times get more difficult, and if we are able to do other things in the community, and that conversation, I think, was very healthy, it was elaborated on, I think, and what Eric and Ann and Siobhan all shared, and Rick as well, about some of the things we're doing in the community to improve, I think, accessibility for certain services, but also hopefully to reach further down in those communities and to have a good, sustainable, and I guess that's the key word here, sustainable base of services. Because I'll just speak from experience here, and certainly I would, you know, readily admit to, my participation as a member of this board in conversations during the recession, but during other budget times, as relates to what gets cut and what stays. And I can tell you, because of the emphasis that's placed on public safety, and particularly on the duty and responsibility we have in our 24/7 facilities for, in custody staff, it even came down to the law enforcement question back in the recession, is that, you know, you had the staff to jail with X amount of officers, you had less officers available in the community. You know, you were going to run one patrol car south and one patrol car north. So it wasn't just in social services. But my point being here is that the concern that would remain with me if we were to embark upon, and we'll get to see what the plan might be, is you make that commitment, both in staffing and in the facility, and so you're not going to, that facility will not go dark. I mean, I might have said that about the Boys Ranch recently in the past, which people didn't presume that would happen, but if you're going to, under federal consent, make that sort of an investment, then the only give you will have as a board, certainly it'll be deliberated at a time, if you don't have that cushion, and, you know, I think we've certainly built some reserves in and so forth, that it will be those community services that will be the greatest risk, the human services, the behavioral health services, and it was referenced here in some of the comments, that, you know, we made cuts that no one would have ever contemplated, but, and some of those were in law enforcement, you know, because things got that dire. But what went first were community-based organizations, what went first were social services, maybe their community campus, mental health treatment center, you could go on and on and on, adult protective services, child protective services, those were where the cuts came first. Ultimately, in the end, we, law enforcement, law and justice took significant hits as well. But, so, my concern would be, is that we make this investment, that we're going to go out to the community, and we're going to do better, and we will, because, I mean, we're already on that path, but I think the true test will be, and again, I certainly wouldn't, won't be here to be a part of that, but I'll be a part of this community, will be able to sustain those things that we know, again, we've heard, not from the community, just heard from today, but from the broader experience of experts that are here, that those things are going to make a difference generationally if we continue to invest in them. And if, but, once you build that, build facility, again, speaking from experience, you know, we were cutting sheriff's officers in the field to the point where we were having little to no coverage in neighborhoods and business districts, but we staffed the jail fully because you had to, because you needed to have certain officers, you needed to have health services, you needed to have food, water, medical, and all those things. And so that is the balance that, you know, in looking at this, when you bring it back next, that I'll certainly be looking through that lens, and again, that's probably no secret to my colleagues or to county staff. Again, we have a responsibility to those who are incarcerated and those that will come through those doors, to do our best to treat them with dignity and respect, but I also worry that when it comes down to tougher times, that that gets the first call, and everything else gets, you know, comes in second. So, and that's just my experience, maybe that wouldn't be the reality in the future. So I guess I would just conclude my comments, that hopefully the plan will include some alternatives for this board to consider. Again, it needs to be based in, you know, in certainly reality, but a lot of this is our assumptions and based in good, you know, good experience and expertise. But I trust we're going to see this back probably November, December timeframe, so there will be a short period of time. We've got the information out on the street, and I think it was good to have this workshop. I want to thank county executive for seeing to that, and certainly Eric and others to have this before the board, I think it's important, lead up for what decision we're going to have before us in a few weeks or a couple of months. That's my comments. All right, any other comments? Ann, did you want to conclude with any?
I would like to, thank you. I just want to take, first, I want to say that this is a very important and very challenging topic. I know all of you understand, and I assure you that me and my staff also understand that we are talking about people in jail, and our goal really is, if one has to spend time in jail, that it's not an awful experience, because I do think it's very difficult right now. So I wanted to start with that. But I also want to take an opportunity to thank the staff that have been working on this, you know, prior to bringing Mr. Jones on, there really wasn't anyone out of the county executive's office that was sort of front and center on this. So I really want to thank him for taking that on and really digging in and giving it a lot of time and attention. But I also need to thank Rick Hyer, because, you know, prior to Eric coming on, Rick was front and center and point person on this, and has really done an exemplary job, I think, of keeping us on track. And then I also want to thank Sandy Damiano, who oversees correctional health right now. She's the interim director of health, but she's been embroiled in this in a long time. I've known Sandy for a long time, and I know her commitment is to those who are incarcerated, and she wants to do a better job by then. So I just wanted to thank those folks.
If I could just also note, because we talked about it in budget a year ago, I think attentiveness to, even though it's an old, you know, in a facility, it challenges, you know, everybody who's in there in different ways, I know that the custodial staff and the cleanliness conditions, and there may be obviously still, you know, individual concerns about that, but I know that the general services, you know, worked hand-in-hand to, again, working with the situation that folks are challenged with, to see to it that we were doing better there, and hopefully are. Again, I haven't had a chance to go through all the monitoring reports, but I know that was called out in a previous monitoring report relative to some of the sanitary and cleanliness conditions. And again, things can be old, but they don't have to be unclean, and I think that that's important, but I know it's.
Agreed, and I think Jeff and his team have done a good job, and my apologies, Jeff, for failing to mention you. And I know that the custody staff are also wanting to, I don't know them well, so I can't speak personally about them, but I do know that from everything I've heard, they're interested in making things better as well.
Okay. Any other comments then? If not, I want to thank people for their patience, I want to thank all those that have waited in here today, and certainly those that have sat with us, didn't get a chance to speak, so consider yourself lucky. Eric and Rick got a lot of the time at the microphone, but again, thank you for being here. And with that, if there's nothing further to come before the board, we will adjourn at 7:04.